District over where Smiths is, we get, as you can see there, about 130,000 a year or so in tax increment funds. You can see that we had budgeted for $262,000 in revenues. That miscellaneous of 132,500 in 2025 this year was for the grant that we had from the Wasatch Regional Council, the Small Area Plan. So that's our revenue. We didn't really spend that much money this year just because of the CRA kind of slowing down. So even though we budgeted a lot of money, we only spent, I think, 10,000 on the grant match for the Small Area Plan and then a few thousand with Zion's Public Finance for some consulting work. No, that was it. But anyway.
Okay, thank you. So we have public comment. Anyone here to speak to this item? Okay.
I was supposed to ask questions, but perhaps we can explain to the public about the budget and how this, the redevelopment agency came about and why we have the budget and what we are using it for and plan to use it for going forward.
Okay, thank you. This is public comment, so does anyone else have a comment? Nope? Okay, we can address that later, but thank you. Mrs. Starkey? All right. Okay, seeing that we have no one else here, would someone like to make a motion to close the redevelopment agency budget hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the redevelopment agency public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at 6:35, we will open the building authority budget hearing.
It's 6:36.
Oh, it's 6:36. Really, my phone must be slow. So 6:33 on my phone. Oh, okay. 6:34 on my phone. We'll wait two minutes.
Oh, sorry.
To start that public hearing.
Hey, excellent eyes. How do you see that?
Yeah.
Public hearing, public comments.
Okay.
And I'll have a little bit more on the next kind of hearing.
Okay, sounds good. All right, does someone want to make a motion to open the municipal building authority budget hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the municipal building authority budget hearing.
I'll second.
Okay.
Aye.
Oh, all in favor? Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Oaks. Sorry, guys. All right, would anyone like to speak to this?
I can briefly comment just what this is, of course, what you're looking at there. These are the bonds that were set up for this building and the police station. So those bonds are scheduled to retire in 2031 for this building and 2033 roughly. We could retire them sooner if we wanted to pay them off sooner, but 2033 for the police station.
Okay, thank you. Well, it doesn't look like we have anyone signed up to speak to that. Would someone like to make a motion to close this hearing?
Yeah, I'll also move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have a couple of minutes to do whatever you need to do.
Is where cue the elevator music or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Jeopardy music?
Exactly. Did I mute them all? Hello, everyone? Okay, we are back. We are now on agenda item, public hearing item three, which is Kaseville City Budget Hearing Fiscal Year 2026. Jason, do you have anything to present on this?
This hearing is required.
She didn't tell me to open.
Oh, sorry, did we need to have a motion? Yes.
Before he has a discussion? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to open this public hearing?
Yeah, I'll also move.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I don't get to vote. I don't know why I did that.
As it states there, this hearing is required by a new state legislation that was enacted last year requiring cities to do a separate hearing for compensation of city officials, meaning elected officials and executive staff. So you can see there, the number there for market adjustment is based on the cost of living adjustment of 2.5%. We look at a number of other cities and what's going on with inflation, things like that to come up with that number. And then the merit adjustment is based on just moving through the salary range. So those employees that haven't topped out get a certain percent increase every year until they reach their range max.
Okay, and that just follows the COLA adjustment for the whole staff?
Correct. It's the same COLA adjustment throughout the city for both staff, executive staff and council.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to this topic? Okay, seeing none, would we entertain a motion to close the public comment for this item?
I'll move that we close public comment for this item.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
What, two minutes till the next?
Two minutes till the next one.
Can I get out for the next one?
No. Tell him happy birthday, Melinda. It's your husband's birthday, so. Okey dokey, we are almost ready. Is John back? Oh, he never left, okay. Okay. Oh, I didn't even know that worked. All right, would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the Kaseville City Budget Enterprise Fund Services and Transfers for 2026?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jason?
All right, so this fund just shows the money that's being transferred between the enterprise funds and the general fund. So for example, that first table there shows the money that's being transferred from the general fund into the enterprise funds as direct revenues for those funds. So for example, having the lights turned on right now in the water sewer, all those things cost obviously, and so to account for those costs, the general fund pays into the power fund, the water funds who refund the cost of those services. So that's what that first box is. The box to the right is the other side of it. The power department, water, those enterprise funds, those departments are receiving services from the general fund. So for example, we're providing administrative services, payroll, HR, IT, fleet services, those sorts of things, and the enterprise fund pays back to the general fund for the cost of those services that are provided. So that's all that's represented.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, is anyone here that would like to speak to this item? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item? Okay. All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close public comment.
I'll make a motion that we close public comment on this hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one more to go, guys, 6:50.
Do you have a way of putting something on the stereo, the Jeopardy music?
The what music?
The Jeopardy? Dun, 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 dun.
Perry, just randomly, I will tell you, I had received so much positive feedback from your speech.
They probably didn't, people that didn't show up.
No, there were people that showed up, so I'm sorry.
It was so good.
I heard you did such a fantastic job. I wish I could have listened.
It was so good.
Anyway, thank you for your service and thank you for being our speaker.
You kept my attention, which is hard.
Which is hard.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
As we all know.
Early in the morning especially.
Yes, we do know that early in the morning is.
That was really cool.
And Abby, I heard you did a fantastic job presenting and conducting that meeting, so thank you.
Which one are you looking at there?
I wore a suit.
Yeah, that was a big deal. My dad said that when he was a little boy.
So this is an income for the whole fund. This is just simply showing, so for example, yeah, like the cost of electricity for all the city buildings was that much money. So we transfer money from the general operating fund into the electric fund.
I think my father, my father didn't.
So just a way to account for the cost. Money still stays within the city.
I wish my uncle would wear his uniform for me one more time.
But just taking money from one fund to the other.
He says he won't.
Again, from the general fund.
Unless I do something grand in my life.
I mean, I could have, but I didn't want to. I just.
It's so neat, though. I know, Perry, but it's so cool.
That's a different, that's not represented here. This is simply to look.
So cool.
This is not a special thing that transfers.
To have accomplished that in your life.
This is not the whole fund.
Okay, everyone, welcome to our Kaseville City Budget Hearing for Fiscal Year 2025, Amendments to the Budget and Consideration of Fiscal Year 2026. Jason, I'll turn the time to you to present. Oh, first of all, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we open up the public hearing for the amendment to FY 2025 budgets and considerations of FY 2026 budgets.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jason?
All right, so for the current fiscal year ending June 30th this month, FY 25, every year we do some amendments based on things that change throughout the year. So this is just showing those significant amendments. Number one, I'll point out, is for dispatch services, you can see an increase of a total of $100,000 in dispatch service costs. 40,000 for fire and 60,000 for police. So as you might recall, we changed our services from the county providing 911 dispatch services to Bountiful doing that for us back in January of this year. When Bountiful invoiced us for the cost, there was $100,000 that they invoiced for the state 911 revenue, tax revenue. That money is supposed to be forwarded from the county to Bountiful on our behalf. So far, that has not happened. We're in negotiations with the county, but right now, we're $100,000 short because we paid Bountiful under our contractual obligation for that $100,000. Our hope is that we'll be able to get the county to go ahead and forward that money, which they've signed a contract that they'll do that, but again, we're kind of negotiating that right now. So that's what that $100,000 represents. There was also, Cole might be able to speak to this more if you'd like, but we have a mower that was a little bit over. That's that 6,000. And then the bumping down to the bottom there, the ARPA funds, that's the COVID influx of federal funds that came a few years ago. We've got to wrap up that fund and spend those monies, so we're transferring the balance of the 307,000 into the water cost for the 200 North project. So that's represented there. That's, those are the amendments to the current year's budget. We'll also get into later in tonight's agenda amendments to the tentative budget for FY 26. So that's when we're going to talk about things that have been asked about, the deputy fire chief, the gymnasium, some of those amendments, but that's next year's budget. This is just for the current year.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Jason, quick question. So negotiating with the county is part of the contract? Is there a deadline for them to pay that $100,000 to Bountiful or?
It's, yeah, good question. I mean, it doesn't get into that level of detail. It just seems there's a, there's a one basically paragraph or a couple of sentences that state the county shall forward state 911 revenues to Bountiful.
Okay. Any indication that they're not going to pay the full amount at this point?
At this point, there, there's a lot of questions that they've got about whether they should do that or not. Obviously, we believe they should and we, the contract speaks pretty clearly, we believe. There's some other nuances that could take a while, they're going to get through, but happy to talk about that later. They believe that, you know, there's some money that Bountiful owes them for calls that Bountiful's taking in but transferring to the county. And so they want, when it comes down to this, I think the $100,000 here is based off of Bountiful's calculations. The county's trying to do its due diligence to make sure they understand the numbers and agree with those.
Oh, okay.
So that's a lot of it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, let's open public comment for this item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about this item or speak to this item?
I have a question.
Okay.
So I just had to ask if this is the right place to put this, and I asked Jason, and this is the right time, right?
Oh, regarding the deputy fire chief? That'd be the next one.
The next one, sorry.
Okay, no problem. We'll see you in just a minute. Okay.
Wait, which one? There's not another next one.
There will be in, as we get going.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, actually, no. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for the 6:50 meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone, we're adjourned for five minutes. I thought we did enterprise fund services. We did that one.
There's three parts of that one.
Amendments to 25 and consideration of 26. I thought it was in the same one.
Year 26.
They're separate public hearings? It's only listed as one.
Right, although we still have slides to review the 26.
Oh.
All right.
Come back, Abby. Do we need a motion to reopen that then? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we reopen the hearing that we inadvertently closed.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Jason?
All right, Mayor, this is just pie chart showing our general, our governmental revenues. Obviously, as you can see, the general fund counts for the lion's share of our, of our funds. Not much more to really say on that. These are the expenditures, and it's literally a mirror image of the revenues. Most of our money is spent in our general fund, collected and spent. This is just showing our, our major revenue sources in the general fund. So you can see the big ones are obviously sales tax and property tax. Nothing probably new for a lot of you there. Maybe the next slide?
Oh, yeah, this is a.
Oh, sorry. Again, mirror image, so these represent the, well, actually, not this one, but these represent the expenditures in our general fund. So you can see public safety, police and fire make up 50% of our total expenditures in, in the general fund. So again, that's typical you'd see of any city. And then our revenues in our enterprise funds, you can see power is the lion's share of that. Just to kind of put everything into perspective, again, this is a mirror image of the revenues. Revenues and expenditures are the same. So again, power is, is the big revenue generator and spender in the enterprise funds. And then this just shows the highlights of the tentative budget. And once again, later on in the agenda, there will be an action item for council to voice any requests for amendments to the tentative budget. So some of the highlights here, as you can see, we've got the gymnasium. We'll have a presentation tonight from the school district on that. We're right now plugging in 10.5 mil, well, sorry, let me back up. The tentative budget has $7 million plugged in for, for the gymnasium. That was our best guess at the time. Over the last couple of weeks, we've learned that that number could be as high as 10.5 million. It's still very much an estimate until, you know, you get through design and actually get a contractor and a general contractor and construction manager on board. So that would be an amendment that would have to be made tonight if, if the council's in favor of that. Other big numbers here in next year's budget are just a continual work on 200 North and Mont Hollow, the power department substations, kind of moving over to operations and maintenance. Those are all really just pass-through costs, but we're seeing some, some increases in those costs. And then the last one, personnel and human resources. You can see the three positions that we've been talking about adding are the assistant city attorney, the police, one police sergeant, and one deputy fire chief. Again, this is the tentative budget, so those three positions are included in the tentative budget tonight. If the council has an interest in making any amendments to those positions, we can talk about that later when we get to that item. And then this, this shows, based on the tentative budget, what, what would happen to our, our tax rate. So you can see we're third to last currently. Based on the tentative budget, if approved, we would go up to, more towards the middle of the pack. I will say too that this assumes that none of the other cities are going to raise their tax rates. If, if that happened and we raised ours based on the tentative budget presented tonight, we would end up right there between Clinton and Syracuse, so. And then this is, I think, a nice pie chart to put our property tax into perspective. So the average Kaseville homeowner, you can see, pays a majority of their property tax to Davis School District, 65%. Kaseville is 16% of, of that total property tax bill that homeowners get. So I think we do a good job. We provide all these services, police, fire, parks, with that 16% of, of the pie. So, and that's really it for, for tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. And, and like you said, that, the ranking is based upon last year, considering the fact that maybe nobody would change, but we do know that a lot of cities are having the same discussions that we're having. So it'll probably kind of put us back to where we are currently. Public comment, does anyone, would anyone like to speak to this?
Laureen Starkey, first of all, I just want to say thank you for, I know going over the budget is not always the funnest thing to do or the most interesting or the most joyful. So I appreciate the time that has been put forth. I also want to say that I just want to speak for members of our community who live on a fixed budget. When the, when the tax doubles or 30% or 20%, it just cuts out. When the, when the tax doubles, or, or thirty percent or twenty percent, it just cuts out the, the things that, their, the discretionary spending, and I know that is understood, but I'm saying thank you for remembering the widow and the, those that are, that are limited in their funding when their, their income will probably not go up at that same rate. The second thing that I wanted to say is I appreciate the understanding, the justification, and I also appreciate understanding the reasons why we had people vote for it and people vote against it. And I appreciate understanding the, the percentage of what, that we want public safety. Maybe we could look at the fact that, to understand if we have a need for more public safety because we have an influx of homeless, or whatever it might be, that happened in the last little while. And the last thing I have to say as a grandparent, as a parent, is sometimes it's difficult to hold the line, namely, to live within the, the means that are allotted, and I just want to appreciate our council members for trying to do that, to, to live within the means that we have and to respect those that are going to, it will be a squeeze for them to pay a little more. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for coming to all these meetings. You're amazing. Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Sorry, is this for, are you guys speaking for the school, the gym?
Not quite yet. This is, we'll, we'll get there though, we will get there. And there is a sign-up sheet to speak to that, so, did you see that? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, seeing, seeing no one else that wants to speak to this item specifically, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Yeah, I'll move that we properly close the.
Thank you.
This board of budget hearing.
Okay, thank you, council member.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, council. All right, so we are right up against city council time, so we will go ahead and start.
Mayor, point of order, did, so, did you hear that there's a sign-up sheet, ma'am?
Yes, sorry, I signed up.
Oh, okay.
Did you, okay, good. Okay, no, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll cue you for that. Okay, thank you. So, this, so we will start our city council meeting. If you need to leave, feel free. If you want to have conversations, please have them just in the lobby, you'll still be able to hear because we project in the lobby, but we do want to make sure that people who are in the meeting and watching on YouTube can hear, so we try to keep this room as quiet and respectfully quiet as we possibly can, so that people can listen in. All right, the, the opening for our, welcome to our city council meeting for Thursday, June 5th, 2025. Our opening tonight will be presented by council member Nate Jackson, who will then lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this very brief since we have a lot on our agenda tonight, but I just want to say, it's good to see all of you, we'd love to have folks in the audience, and also, I want to say, working through the budget process with the staff, with the council up here, it's been a pretty tremendous process, and I can tell you that all of us are very concerned about those on fixed budgets. We're also concerned about how the city runs and manages its money and its funds, very mindful of that. It's been a pleasure to work with all of my colleagues up here to, to get to this position that we are in now. But with that, will you all please stand with me to say the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where its stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member Jackson. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is called Call to the Public for Anyone Who Might Be New. This is where pub, you can get up and, and talk about something, anything that you really want to and address us. You'll have three minutes, and then your microphone will die, and there's also a timer, so please come up and speak to us during this time. We don't interrupt you, we don't comment, we don't respond, we smile, and we will take notes. So, during the meeting, we'll be able to address anything you raise in terms of questions, but we won't do it during this public comment time because it's your time. All right, so if you'll come up in this order, that would be great. Gil Miller, Laurie Cragan, Michelle Barber, Brittany Shalita, and Chris Hogan, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Gil Miller, I live in southeast Kaysville. To give some context as to what I'd like to talk about tonight, it involves the gymnasium. In the two thousand nine, ten era, I was sitting where you're sitting, but our chairs were much worse. And, but, I was sitting where you're sitting, and we had an opportunity with the Davis School District at that time to do more or less what is being considered right now for Kaysville Junior High, but at the time, it was for Centennial Junior High. The council visited Legacy, I believe it's called Legacy Junior High in Leighton, who had done the, the doubling of the gym size recently in Leighton. I was impressed, at least one other council member was impressed, but at the end of the day, the vote was three to two, and we decided not to go forward with that. I would like to encourage the council to not make the same mistake twice. I don't under, I don't believe there's a city that has ever not taken up the opportunity that the Davis County School District is giving us, except Kaysville in the two thousand nine and ten era. It's a lot of money, I recognize that, but the, the paybacks and the investments that are coming from this type of investment for our youth, for our adults, is, is incredible. And so, I just hope that you will seriously consider this and not make the mistake that, that the council made in two thousand nine, because it's cost us goodwill with the school district of Davis County. We've regained some of that goodwill, let's don't lose it again tonight, or in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Laurie Cragan, and I don't like to be here, but here I am. I've talked a little bit to Abby, and I just want you to know, I appreciate what Gil had to say, and I've talked to some other folks in my neighborhood. I am concerned about the gym, and I, I realize upfront, I probably need to know more about it, but just some of my concerns as, you know, an older person, I, my kids are all graduated, they're not in school anymore, but I think I'm not against pickleball, I'm not against the gym as it is. My question is, ten point five million, that's a lot of money, and we don't know if it's going to go higher, we don't know for sure, and I realize that will be forthcoming, but we have talked in the city about a fire depart, a fire station on the west side, and that's what I'm concerned about. I am involved in emergency preparedness, I'm concerned that if an earthquake happens, like they are predicting it will, and if Burton Bridge and Two Hundred North Bridge were stuck on the west side, and I realize a lot of you live around, over on that side, but from an emergency preparedness standpoint, I'm concerned about that. I have grandkids living in my basement, they have gotten variances to go to, they're supposed to go to Kaysville Elementary, they've gotten variances to go to Snow Horse, so that it's easy to get to, and we're, it's convenient not driving all the way over. So, my question is, do, and I know you can't answer my questions, but just to put it out there, do we know what a second fire station, what the cost of that would be? I'm understanding that we have a new truck that's being put into service, I understand we have two of some trucks, and I don't know that there would have to be a lot of vehicles bought, just kind of help us understand, where is that west side station? I know we have the property, I know where it is, I'm interested in how that keeps kind of getting kicked down the road, kind of want to know, where do we stand with that? We, we, I, I know that the police department, the station, that had a bond on him, I was all for the police station, wish it would have gone through the first time the way that was, it would have been cheaper, so I, I'm not opposed to that, I'm not opposed to the gym, but I want to know, in public safety and serving all citizens, where does the fire station fit in with this? Thank you.
Absolutely, and, and we will answer that question, your questions, because they're really, really good.
Hello, everybody, it's fun to see you all. Like we said, I'm Michelle Barber, a resident of Kaysville, so I'm just thankful to come and talk to you guys tonight. Just like Gil said, I like to preface my discussion and my gratitude tonight, I sat where you guys sat for, on city council for a while, and we considered this very thing that you're talking about tonight, I think, agenda number four for the proposed gymnasium with the school district. And one of the things that sparked that conversation was not only the history that Gil talked about, but also that we were able to get a lot of feedback from residents during that time about what they want to see in their city. And I know you guys are very well aware, one of the top things is we want recreation, we want things to do, we want places to recreate, off-hours, we have adult sports we're not able to facilitate like other cities are because we just don't have court space, and that came back over and over again. So, I thank you guys so much for not missing this opportunity with the school district. It's, not only is Kaysville Junior High in such a great place in the heart of the city, it's an opportunity to just improve our downtown, which you guys are working really hard on. I want to thank you as the city council for improving, working on a master plan, working on a vision for downtown, and I really think this aligns with exactly what you're working on. I think this is a perfect, really good step in that direction, and, so I applaud you for that. And to back up just a little bit to your very fun budget conversation, I doubt you have very many people come up here and say that they miss the budgeting process, but it is really fun, because you get to see what, how the city runs. It's not the thing I miss the most, that's for sure, but looking at that number, it seems like a huge number, and then you really look at what we're paying for, I think our city does an amazing job. We're very frugal, we're very efficient with what we have, and I think you have a lot to be proud of. I know it's not fun looking at needing more money and raising taxes, so I applaud you for that leadership as well, because that's not easy. And, so some of the questions about the Davis School District, I will say, since my time in public service and city council, I now sit on the Davis School District Board of Education, so I am very familiar with our district, I'm familiar with our utilization and our inter-local agreements, and I can say with confidence, we have a great team, we have some amazing architects that we work with, amazing facilities management, you'll get to hear from them later on this afternoon, and I can say that they will take care of Kaysville. They will make sure that we get a product that is within our budget, that we're all agreed upon, that they'll be great partners with, and it will be something that we can be proud of, and you can look at the school, the school district and say we serve them well, you can look at every demographic and community and said we were wise with our funds, and we want to have Kaysville be a place that people want to come and they want to stay and recreate, so thank you again for doing that.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Brittany, and I would like to speak in favor of the proposed gymnasium. The three reasons why are, one, is an increased opportunity for the children of Kaysville. I feel very passionately as a parent, as an educator, and as a resident, to have the voices of children be heard, and for children to have opportu, children tough, opportunity to recreate, and I, and so I think that this, this gym would, would support that. I also, I know that it would increase the opportunity for adults in the recreation sport area. I have looked, when I sign my kids up for sports, I often look at the adult section, and it's pretty limited. I have participated in the Leighton City sport volleyball, sports at Shoreline Junior High at their facility, and I would love to have that be an opportunity for the adults of Kaysville. I also would like to support it because I think it also improves the students at Kaysville Junior High. I am a native Kaysville resident, I moved away when, after I graduated, but, and I said I'd never come back, but here I am as a loyal Kaysville resident, like many, many people are, because as, I have five children of my own, and so I, it's a great place to raise kids, and, going back to the kids, my kids currently play soccer, and if you've been to any Kaysville Recreation Soccer Games, it is, you know, everybody comes, and it's very robust, and I think one reason is it's not very limited to, you know, the, the space, and so I think improving the indoor space for the kids would, would be a great opportunity. So, as an adult athlete, a parent, and a resident, these are some of the reasons why I would support the Kaysville Gymnasium.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Hello.
Hello.
And first of all, thank you very much for your service. I don't envy your position, but I appreciate it very much. I'm here also, I want to speak in favor of the gymnasium. I'm a, a resident here for nineteen years, live on the west side, and I'm excited because this gym will be less than five minutes from my house, and so I'll probably go use it. Other than that, also a former student of KJH, so.
Oh, nice.
That's kind of fun. I was disappointed years ago when the rec center, you know, didn't come to pass, and, and then also the, the expanded gym at Centennial, so I think, kind of to echo Gil Miller's, Gil Miller's, sorry, statement, you know, let's, let's not miss this opportunity again. Let's see, the kids in my neighborhood, I, I work with the youth programs, and they, they need more gym space, you know, every program that they go to is, is overcrowded, and, and they just need more opportunity to, to be physical, especially on an indoor space. I know it's lots of money, and I respect that, I just think it's a great investment, so that's my voice of support, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate you being here. All right, thank you, everyone. We took notes, and we will respond to your questions, and we'll keep, continue in our meeting. All right, conflicts of interest, anyone have anything they'd like to declare?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
I had some, did some work on action item six A and B.
Okay.
So, I just feel it's appropriate probably that I don't be involved in those.
Okay, sounds good, we will excuse you when we have those discussions. Thank you, council member Adams. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes. I don't have a conflict of interest, but I would like to make a motion to move item seven C, which is a discussion of potential gymnasium partnership with Davis School District, and put it right at the top of the action items, so before action item six A.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second.
Just a question.
Yes.
Does that move it from a work item to an action item?
No, no, she just, just because we're going to have the gym presentation. So, we thought we would have the conversation right after, just more, more for ease. You okay with that? Okay, would you like to second that?
So, should it be moved ahead of the consent items, or?
No, because it's not a consent item, so we just.
I said ahead of.
Oh.
Okay, consent items should go quickly. Sorry.
Right, just to keep it in, in order, so, okay, thank you. Someone want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Council member Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you, council member Hunt, for that. So, the gym action item will be now, will now become six A, and we'll just move everything else down on the agenda. Okay, consent items, would someone like to make a motion? Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the presentation is in order.
Oh, yeah, I've got, I've got presentations, sorry, I'm out of order.
No, you're good.
Okay, presentations. Chief Ober. We have a presentation to recognize Tina Johnson for her service as youth court advisor. She's absolutely incredible, and we can't wait to hear a little bit more. Chief Ober.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Nothing's to it.
Thank you, council member Barber.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in from, in front of this body tonight, I have a couple of agenda items, but first, I just want to say, at times, I've been here for twelve years, and at times I have camp, or I've questioned the sanity of. of this body. And tonight I heard a former council member describe the budget process as fun. I'm not saying that's an indictment, but it might be a clue and, um, anyway.
See you.
Okay, she just stuck, stuck around for that.
Yeah.
I told her I was gonna tease her, but, um, the, the first thing I've got is I just want to express some appreciation and do some recognition for one of our youth court advisors. Um, so if I could have Tina Johnson come up? So Tina became a youth court advisor in 2017. Prior to that, she was kind of the youth court mom. Uh, three of her five children were youth court judges. Um, one of her boys went to law school and is now practicing law. She's lived in Kay'sville for twenty-one years and is currently the librarian at Centennial Junior High, where she's been for six years. Uh, before that, she was a librarian at Case Creek Elementary. And during her time with youth court, she's been invaluable to the program and the city of Kay'sville. Under her guidance, she's overseen six hundred youth court hearings resulting in three thousand community service hours, three hundred essays, PowerPoints, posters, other creative semesters, nine hundred counseling and tutoring classes, and six hundred apology letters. She's also overseen the training, teaching, and supervision of about a hundred and forty youth court judges. And through this program, she's positively impacted the lives of hundreds, hundreds of our youth and rendered a great service to Kay'sville. So I appreciate you, thank you.
Tina, we, we'd like to grab a picture with you and honestly, thank you. For those that don't understand or maybe you're not familiar with youth court, Chief, will you just explain quickly what that is? Because I think some people might not know.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Um, it, it's a program that we have, it, I'd said it was invaluable and it really is because it, you know, when we encounter youth that are doing something that's against the law, really without youth court, our only other alternative is to just do nothing with it or put them in, uh, s- send them to juvenile court. And, you know, there's a lot of stigma with juvenile court and, um, it really isn't the optimal solution for our youth, you know, particularly, you know, we're talking, uh, these days about some of the challenges with e-bikes and things like that. And just as our communities have evolved, it's really gotten more difficult for youth to, to get out and do things and we've, we've made it really a lot harder to be a youth, um, in this day and age. And so, a program like this, that's an alternative to, to juvenile court, but can still, um, maybe correct behavior and help shape young lives is, is just huge to this city. And our youth court judges, we have Kim Smith back there who's done it for, you know, over two decades, a- and Tina here, I mean, they're just volunteer all their time and it's just a, an incredible program, uh, for really the whole city.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the explanation and kind of looping us in. For those that don't know, thank you so much for all of your time. I mean, I think about all the kids that you've helped mold and save, so we'd love to get a picture with you.
Okay. Maybe I'll-
Thank you so much, appreciate it. What's your favorite book?
My favorite book, the only one I currently read.
Kristen Banks.
The Bible.
Kristen Banks.
Killer Ranger.
Thank you, honestly, thank you. We've changed so many kids, so we appreciate you, thank you, we miss you.
Killer Ranger.
Killer Ranger.
I don't know, did you let it? It's, uh, happy ending.
Oh.
With, uh, Michael Schip, the show.
It's, uh, currently, I agree, it's a happy ending.
Thank you, Tina.
And then, uh, number B, Kristen Banks, we were gonna swear her in tonight, but she's got sick family members, so we'll, we'll do that another night. Um, and then lastly, and I'll try to, to make this quick because I know you've got a, a long evening, is I just want to talk about our annual report a little bit and maybe give an opportunity if you have any questions. So I, I sent you that and I'll, I won't go into it unless you would like me to, but I'll just, uh, kind of briefly talk about the, uh, disposition of the police department tonight. Um, as you know, we've got thirty-four officers and three professional staff. Nine of those are partially or fully funded through grants or partnerships. Um, this past year was very similar to the year before as, um, as far as activity goes, we had roughly seventeen thousand, um, calls for service and traffic stops. Uh, we remained for the second year in a row, the second safest city in Utah, based off of, uh, crime statistics. Uh, most of our crime stats have gone down a little bit from last year, so it was, you know, in most regards, a, a better year as far as, as, uh, safety goes. Um, our response times went up, uh, if you notice, that went up quite a bit, and that's something that we'll, we'll, uh, continue to work on. Congestion and, and staffing and just, you know, kind of stretching the city boundaries have all contributed to that a little bit. Uh, traffic safety and congestion continues to be a big concern from our public, uh, a lot of our calls have to do with, with that. Um, so one of those thirty-four officers is a traffic officer that keeps pretty busy, um, not just, uh, enforcing traffic, but doing studies and, uh, communicating with the public and working with Public Works and things like that. Uh, so we'll continue to work on that, but our, our accident numbers stayed about the same as years prior, so, uh, that's good, that's something that we're always, always trying to work on. Um, I, earlier I made a little bit of a joke about, uh, mental health, uh, but that's a program I want to talk about just briefly because, uh, our mental health clinician, uh, that whole program, the funding for that has expired and so we no longer have that resource, but, uh, I just want to report on it a little bit because that was a very valuable resource. Uh, we had an in-house therapist for four years, um, helping the officers with some of their issues, but in doing that also, training them to do a better job with some of our, our mental health, uh, issues that we experience on the street. Uh, so that was a fantastic program and something that we take serious and I think it has, that, that program has made our department a better department, more, more efficient and more effective in what we're doing on the street. So I, I appreciate the support of that in years past. Um, one of our, one of our issues this year, you know, our budget is largely just, uh, personnel, so most of our costs are, are fixed costs and, uh, you know, we're a people business and most of what we deal with is just people and problems. Uh, this year we had, our attrition rate, uh, was about ten percent, a little bit over, we lost four employees. And I've talked about one of those positions in years past, it was, uh, evidence and records technician position. We've lost three of those in the past probably eighteen months, but, uh, we've recently, uh, got a new hire and, uh, somebody who's had a lot of prior experience and retired and came back to work, and she's been fantastic and, and we're kind of getting that, those areas, uh, resolved again. And, you know, some of the, some of the programs that we had to dial back or, or pause, I hope we're able to get going back again this year. We haven't done, provided fingerprint services to the public for several years and, and I, I think we'll be able to get that back on track and some of the other programs. So, I'm excited about that. Um, we also lost three officers this year. Uh, we lost one to another department for, uh, higher pay and better benefits, um, although I, I do still, I think that was a mistake and we're, we're a better part, department, but, uh, we did lose that officer that. We lost one officer to, uh, medical disability. He went on long-term disability just this past, uh, week, and we lost one to termination. So, um, you know, those, those things happen, but we've been very fortunate in the last several years to not experience, uh, some of those things, at least with our sworn employees. Uh, so, that was, that was disruptive to us and, uh, we've recently hired three replacements, uh, the one that we were going to introduce tonight and, and two that we have in the police academy right now. Uh, so we, we hope to bring those before you in, uh, August to introduce them. Um, let me see what else. A couple projects I just want to talk about, we, we finished consolidating our, our virtual consolidation with the other cities on the same server, and so we all operate on the same, uh, computer-aided dispatch system, which is a benefit. Uh, again, it's a, it's an efficiency and effectiveness tool that we can see other agencies' reports and they can see our reports and it's just, uh, kind of standardizes a lot of things, so hopefully the services are more similar, you know, when somebody goes from one city to the next, uh, that's a goal of all of ours. Uh, we also switched to, uh, Bountiful Dispatch this year from, uh, Davis County. I think, uh, our city manager talked about some of those challenges, uh, in the last meeting. Um, I do think that is, that's, that's gone off without a hitch as far as operations goes, um, and I think that'll be a, a good switch for us, not anything against, uh, Davis County, but it's been a very good change for us going with Bountiful thus far, and I think, uh, the, the savings will be immense for this city, uh, once we work out this, uh, this contract. Um, we've also, uh, finished the implementation of the upgraded, uh, in-car cameras and dash cameras that we talked about, uh, last year. That project's finished and, and moving forward and going well. And just generally, the, the infrastructure in the police department is, uh, good. We continue to do minor repairs on the police station, but the fleet's in good condition and, and you'll see on the budget or have seen, uh, we're asking for fewer cars this year because I think that our fleet is in good condition. Um, technology continues to be a challenge for us, like, like much of the, the world and a lot of our investigations are technology-related, uh, investigations now, which, which is more difficult. And, uh, the other side of that is, you know, our, the cost to investigate those and all our software costs have gone up, uh, quite a bit over the last couple of years. And I'm sure you've seen that in our budget, uh, as well. Um, and, uh, but I think we're in a good position, we will see some taser replacement, uh, in the next couple of years and that's gonna be fairly expensive too, and it's something that we put off, uh, and we'll continue to probably put off as long as we can. Uh, but that, that's on the horizon. Um, other than that, uh, I think we're in great shape and, uh, if, if any of you have any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate your report. Any questions, Council?
I'm just extremely curious about the tasers and what is needing replacing and what do the current ones do? Like, will they only, will they go like, "Meow," and not hit the body or what's the deal?
I, I think they just keep trying to make them better and better, so you have to try to, to buy new stuff. I think they're, like a lot of products, I think they kind of try to make them obsolete after X amount of years and they quit supporting them.
Okay.
I think the tasers that we have right now are, work great and we don't need any new, you know, taser with-
Okay, so it's not like, uh, it's not like you're limping by with-
No.
-half-assed tasers, right? It's just that the-
No, they, they, they work fine, they work great. At some point, they're not gonna be supported and we're not going to, you know, it'll be a matter of going to their new program or not carrying them at all, which, um, you know, we could do, but, but there's, there's other consequences, not carrying those, but-
Can I have one for grandkids?
They do sell civilian-
You do sell?
Yes.
Great question, thank you, um, thank you, Councilmembers. Anyone else?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Chief, I just, very much, as a resident, very much appreciate what you and the force does for us in, in keeping us safe and, you know, the high standards that you all keep and the residents, you, you feel safe here in, in Kay'sville, so thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Mayor.
Yes, oh, Councilmember Hunt, absolutely.
I just also want to say thank you, um, every time I meet with any of our police officers or meet a new police officer, I'm always like, this is the most professional group of people I've ever met. They just, they know what they're doing, they're very focused and, and I appreciate that. And yeah, like Perry said, we feel safe here in Kay'sville and, and yeah, I mean, there's so much I could say about the police department, I love you guys, um, but just the things you go through, you know, every time I talk to a police officer, they'll mention something kind of offhand and I'm like, that's terrifying, like, I don't think I could do that every day, but they do every day and they come and, and keep us safe, so thank you.
Thank you. I, I think, you know, my personal opinion, and I, I've been around for a long time, I think Utah does policing better than almost anywhere, um, as far as our standards, and, um, I think in Kay'sville, we do a very good job too, so I, I'm very proud, uh, to lead this group and I really, um, it's not lost on me that, what a great opportunity is for me to, to be here in this city and leading this group, and so I appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you, and I was just gonna echo what, what's been said, but also just appreciate the communication. I think that the public information that you share is so helpful, um, most recently about e-bikes and, and motorized scooters and, and things like that, because I think just people being aware and, and educated about things helps so much. It helps all of us be able to self-police ourselves and educate our children and watch out for these kids that are having fun and, and don't realize that maybe there are some rules. So appreciate the kind way in which you go about communicating with us, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks everyone, thanks Chief.
Thank you.
All right, with some-
I'm sorry, I forgot, I do have, uh, my victim advocate here.
Oh, yes.
She has to, she also has to give a report for her grant.
Absolutely, Jennifer, come on down. Jennifer Winchester, who is an amazing victims advocate.
And she was gonna just let me screw this whole thing up too.
I was just gonna go without doing this today.
And Walter.
Thank you guys for having me here every year. Um, I'm not gonna take a lot of your time today, I think I've spoken with everybody at this point, um, but, as he said, part of my grant requirement is that I come and speak to you so that you guys understand the importance of the programs and what we're funding each year. Where do I point it? Or am I doing it wrong? You gonna take care of it?
Is it?
Yeah, it's not. Sorry. Okay. Um, so I'll quickly just go over what our funding is for both programs, so the, oh, sorry, thank you. I can't do all these things at once, it's making me chew gum and walk at the same time. Um, okay, so the first program that we have is our Utah Victim Services Program, um, which funds my program as an advocate. Um, it funds sixty-two percent of my salary and thirty-eight percent of it is city-funded. Um, I just applied for the most recent, um, grant application for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven, I have a mistake on there, fiscal year, um, I should know sometime this month if it's approved, um, and it's gonna be for the same amount of sixty-five thousand dollars, which would keep my grant funding the same. Um, I also have the vow grant, the vow grant pays, um, twenty-five percent of our, uh, vow detectives' salary and just because we have other people in the room, the vow detective investigates our domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking cases. Um, I actually just applied for the application and about an hour ago, got notified that that one was actually approved.
Awesome.
So, uh, we do have funding again for this year, for, or for the next two years on that program. Um, I'm not gonna go too much into the role of the vow detective and myself, I think I've spoken to that many times over the last few years. Um, really, I'll just go over kind of our growth, um, so, um, we are growing in cases. Last year, we did a hundred and fifty-two cases, the vow detective did. This year, between quarter one and quarter three, we're at a hundred and forty-two, so we're probably set to exceed what we did last year for his, um, cases. Um, cases by the different victimizations for his is seventy, um, sexual assault, thirty-six domestic violence, and nineteen stalking cases that he worked on. Um, for my program, it is growing year by year. Um, last year I ended at three hundred and eighty-nine victims, this year to date, well, to quarter three, I'm at three hundred and twenty-one victims. Um, I will say it's getting to be a lot to handle, um, so we are definitely, definitely do have a need here in the city for it. Um, these are the victimization types that I've served so far this, um, this year up to quarter three. Um, you'll notice the victimizations, um, sometimes they overlap, so sometimes I will have a victim who comes in who is a victim of domestic violence, who's also a victim of sexual assault, um, so we do count both, all types of victimizations in those numbers. Um, my- My highest two are going to be domestic violence, sexual assault. And then coming in third is going to be child sex abuse. So those are our highest numbers that we're serving right now. Some of our lower numbers that I'm not really getting to is our burglaries, financial crimes, those types of things. We have to sometimes, you know, basically kind of triage cases and pick the ones that we can get to, unfortunately. So tonight, rather than going into a lot of detail on my program and what I do in the program, I've actually had a couple of victims that I work with who, over the years, also come to me and they say, hey, how can I give back? What can I do? You know, we spend a lot of times and hours together. Sometimes they'll ask me, like, why don't you have other advocates? Like, these types of things. And so I've actually had two victims write letters to you guys that I'm going to hand out. And I'd like you to just maybe take some time and read on your own if you have time. Thank you. I'll tell you just a little bit about both of them, but I'm not going to read them for you. This first victim is a sexual assault victim. She was actually not going to report at all. Her sister talked her into it. She had a very, a picture in her mind that it was going to be like this dull, dark room. She was going to go in and some men drilling, drilling her over and over. At the end of all of this, her case was not prosecuted. Charges were not filed in the case. However, she did write this letter and in it she said, "Reporting a crime is a safe and empowering space to reclaim your voice and stand up against violence." And she accredits that to the fact of she walked into a very comfortable space. She dealt with myself and our Vowel Detective. And so I feel like those are pretty good letters for you guys. This victim wrote a letter. She was actually a victim of domestic violence. I'll just read to you the first line in there because it spoke a lot to me. "There is no doubt in my mind that I would not be alive today if it were not for the unwavering support of an intervention of my advocate." I feel really weird reading this to you guys because I feel like I'm bragging, but I didn't write it, so. But this is actually a case, Nick and I actually worked on this together. It's a case we ended up taking all the way to trial. We did get charges out of it, but it, between prosecute, protective order court and the actual criminal case, we probably were in court over 20 times. I have pictures of Walter in both of those because both of those victims did have Walter assisting and made a big difference in their lives. So it's really just kind of what I wanted to share for you. I think if you guys would take the time to read that, that would be great. Yeah. Any questions?
No, thanks for what you do.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Quick question. So you're, the two grants, where does that funding come from? Are those state grants or federal or mixed?
So one is state, so the Utah Victim Service Provider Grant, USPV or VP, I don't know. They just rechanged it. The one that is funding me is actually a state grant that got implemented last year. I'm the only one in the county who has that grant. And then the Vowel Grant is federal funding.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all the work that you do and you have every right to brag, so.
Absolutely. I will just mention, so, you know, public people, sometimes there's some weird people out there. Last year, I had a situation where I had a stalker and Jennifer helped me. I never imagined myself being in that chair, sitting on our couch with Walter. And it was scary. It's scary when things like that happen. And mine was not extreme, the way many people are in extreme situations. But I just so appreciate the fact that you were there for me and you walked me through that whole process. And it did result in some charges being filed. And so I appreciate our police department. I mean, you just never know when you might be in that chair and be on the other side and be a victim of some kind of a, you know, stalking situation or a crime. And so, so grateful for what you've done. And totally appreciate you and so grateful that you also are willing to apply for grants, that our police department is so engaged and so willing to do that. Because, you know, a lot of times, police and fire, the insurance policy is right for all of us, but absolutely so necessary because when you're that person, it makes a huge difference. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Chief. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. I am skipping ahead so badly. All right, architects. Okay, we are now on item 3D, presentation of potential, on potential gymnasium partnership. And so I will turn the mic over to... Will you please introduce yourselves when you come up? The architects that are working on this project with the school district. And we also have the school district here. Take it away, please. Go ahead and introduce yourselves for us as well.
All right. I am Brian Peterson from VCBO Architecture. This is Hoku Lani Ching from VCBO Architecture and Brian Turner from the Davis School District.
Yes. The dream team. Okay.
So we are very excited to be here today, especially with all the support that the community is very excited about. VCBO is very proud of the work that we've done in Kaysville. We were, just for the record, we were super heartbroken when Centennial, the double gym at Centennial didn't materialize. But here we are with this fantastic opportunity. And so we'd like to share with the council, but also with the community, our general starting point for our plans. I think it's important to note that the city council and the city has been very intent on getting as much information as possible, which we're grateful for because the more information that we can get from our clients is the, is the better information that we can actually put into the project. But we're super proud of the work that we've done in Davis County over the decades, but also specifically in Kaysville. We just barely finished the teen center at Davis High School, which we're very proud of. But we've done multiple projects. Do you want me to specifically go through each of these things? Or is this good enough for a general overview? Okay. So the idea, if you're not, if you're not aware, is that the Davis School District has a very specific square footage and use requirements for when we design and build a brand new gymnasium or a brand new school. And so we've devised this way to be able to partner with the local city and double the size of that gym, which in turn gives the city a basically a rec center for a quarter of the price that you would spend on a rec center. And it also gives the, the school district a much bigger gym. So it's a win-win, a very synergistic experience in which everybody, especially the residents of that area, benefit greatly. So we'll go over the details of our initial concept plan for you. But you, for any of you who have been to Legacy or to Shoreline, this is, this is going to be just like that, but better.
Right. And for those that don't know, we did have an opportunity last, was it last week? To tour both of those schools with this group so that we were able to put eyes on it, get an idea of, and you'll see some pictures, so.
Yeah, and we're currently building in West Point, out in the far, far west of West Point, almost in the lake, a junior high called Horizon. And this is a rendering of what that will ultimately look like. That's going to be finished this summer. And it will have a gym that is partnered with West Point City, which currently will be one of the biggest gyms in the county. And the gymnasium that we're proposing for Kaysville City at Kaysville Junior High is similar to this size. So we're very excited about that and the research that you guys have done with us, we're grateful for as well. So the idea is that we'll split that cost of that building. So the cool thing about the one that we build at Kaysville Junior High is that would be standalone gymnasium. So it would feel a lot more like a rec center than, than maybe Shoreline or Legacy does. If you've been to Central Davis Junior High in Leighton, it also has a standalone gymnasium that feels a lot more like a Leighton City rec center than if it's when it's just connected to the school. So we'll have that opportunity and a running track that goes around the perimeter of the gym. And those costs will be split 50/50 with that track going down between the city and the school district. And then your own gymnasium, which will be labeled as, you know, Kaysville City. And we'll put your logo in the middle of the gym and you'll be able to have pure ownership of that gymnasium. So really quickly, between Columbia Elementary and Kaysville Junior High, what we're doing is proposing that we build that new gymnasium with locker rooms for the school and a reception area that can be used for the school, but also for the city on evenings and weekends. And then a city office and Hoku Lani will go over that in a second. But we really wanted to make sure that there was good frontage on 350 South, just off of Main Street, so that when you're driving by on Main Street, you could poke your head down there and look and see the rec center. Also with a real strong connection to the existing school. And we're quite excited about the opportunity in this, in this green space between Columbia and Kaysville Junior. So Hoku Lani, you want to?
So this is the early stages of the first level plan that we are looking at. The, I don't have a pointer, but at the bottom of the page is the main entrance. So that would be across from the existing Kaysville Junior High. In the green, we're roughly showing the city spaces. And then in the orange, we've got the school spaces. What's awesome though is that, you know, you pay for half of the gym and the seats, but during certain times, you have access to all of it. So continuing through the building from the bottom, on either side, we've got the school locker rooms and public restrooms. Then you've got the gyms. You can see they can be striped for whatever you need. Basketball courts, pickleball courts, volleyball. And then we've got some utility spaces and storage on either end. On level two, we've got a few different open fitness spaces, cardio spaces. So equipment that could be used with awesome views out on level two. So those are on either side and then also at the front over that lobby, main reception space. To the right of that is that fitness space that can be used for aerobics, yoga, Pilates, dance classes. That would also be a shared space.
So this is just some, to give context, some recent construction photos of Horizon Junior High. In the upper right-hand corner, you're actually seeing a rendering from our, our design. And then on the far upper left-hand corner, you're seeing a construction photo of that, of that main entry. So one of the things we like to do when we design a gymnasium that is shared is we like to give clear access from the school, but also clear access for the city to use it evenings and at weekends. And so people have a clear understanding that they're going into the gymnasium for the, for the city rather than into the school where they don't belong on a daily basis. Again, the cool thing about building a standalone building for, for not only the school district, but for Kaysville City, it'll feel much more like a rec center that the, that the students are using at the same time as it feels like it's something that the city owns. So this is just a couple of progress photos to show you the scale of this gym. If you have been to Legacy or to Shoreline, again, this one at Horizon is about 10 to 15% bigger because of the retractable seating and a little bit more circulation around the courts that we felt was important. And then we are proposing that that same size of gym would be built for Kaysville. And this is just a, just a finished photo of Legacy Junior High, which has obviously been finished for almost 15 years now, actually more, 17 years. And we learned a lot from doing these gyms and you can kind of see this beautiful progression from Legacy to Centennial to Shoreline and now to, and now to Horizon that started really over 25 years ago with West Point Junior High. And that's Shoreline Gymnasium. One of the things we learned was to create this barrier between the two main courts. And so these curtains that you're seeing in between are very important for people moving back and forth between without disrupting the games. And a clear delineation in the bottom right, left-hand corner about, this is Shoreline Junior High, but this is also Leighton City's gymnasium, which was very successful. Just more photos from Shoreline. You can see that corridor in between. On the upper left-hand corner about people just moving around without disrupting the games. Okay, so any questions for us or comments?
I think the biggest question that I've been asked is when would this project start? And I know you've told us, but maybe just...
Yeah, Brian, you want to speak?
If you'll elaborate a little bit on that.
Yeah, we're, I think as soon as we get to go ahead, we'll really start plowing forward with the design. Probably anticipate having it ready to bid late fall, maybe early winter. And then, you know, probably, probably 18 months to two years to build it. So if we could start in hopefully January or February, then we'd kind of go that way. You know, lots of uncertainties in the construction market, but we, we're in the process. We're going to hire a construction manager and hope to have one on board by mid-July.
Okay, of this year?
Yeah.
So that you can get going. Okay. And then you'd build in the fall because it's, just you get better pricing, right?
I'm sorry.
You'd build in the fall or the winter because you might get better pricing?
As soon as they get the plans done and, you know, we should, it was like your only project. But, you know, they do, they do work for other school districts, so we'll, we'll fit all that in.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, being that we've built several of these in the past, it's not going to be super
Right.
difficult to get plans done.
Councilmember Beckham?
Okay, just a question. So as far as time of use, I know there's the school, when the school's in, obviously, then you got to be more restrictive, you got to be careful. But other than that, there's no restrictions on weekends, right? If it's the city wants to use it on both days of the weekends, then that's okay.
Right, yeah. We'll do an inter-local agreement. And we have several of these gyms. We have three in Leighton. We have one in Clearfield. We have the one in West Point that's, that will be happening. So we'll, we'll work together with the city and create an inter-local agreement that sets that forward. You know, maybe if there's a way, if you have some supervision available, you could open it up in the morning for people to come in and walk. I think generally the way it works during the school day, the school has it till about 5 o'clock and then they have to wrap up all their activities and then city takes it from there and you go as late as you need to in the evening and they have the weekends and possible holidays or times off when the school's out, things like that, so.
Thank you. I have a question, right? Earlier on in the meeting, I don't know if you were here, but we were talking about the ratio with which our property taxes are distributed. And I think it was 16% goes to, was it Jason, 16% goes to Kaysville City of the property tax and the lion's share goes to the school district, which we appreciate everything you do for our students and the schools. I just, you know, and yeah, you could laugh me off the stage right now for asking, but would the school ever entertain doing like a 60/40 split with us?
I don't know if I'm the one to answer that, but... So we had, when we passed our bond election in 2022, we had just a gymnasium for Kaysville Junior High on the list. You know, if you're familiar with Kaysville Junior High, the gym is very small. Ceiling's very low. It's not adequate for activities that they need. So we were going to build the gym anyway, but I think the opportunity to partner with the city has been tremendous. I, you know, I think it's going very well with the other cities that were doing it. I know there's still a lot of, a lot of the details that need to be worked out with payment and paying it back and those kind of things. And that's probably not me that's going to, I just build them, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I'll go build it.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just like to throw those things out. I mean, even if, you know, I get that there's sort of a precedent that's been set and I understand that. But maybe even if it, if it goes down to things like the extra rooms that we're splitting in half and some of those other things that we're splitting in half, if we could set it up so that we're just paying for half of the gym and, and those rooms are covered by the school.
So you know what that means though? That just means that the school will raise their property taxes that much more. So you're still paying for it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that 65% of my tax that goes to the school district, that doesn't cover these. This, you know, we have to bond for...
In addition.
So that's a whole separate item anyways.
Great, great things to ask though, for sure. Great, great things to ask though, for sure. For sure, for sure, we'll ask.
We could give you a sixty-foot court if you wanted. Uh, all joking aside, uh, there are different agreements with different, uh, cities that where they maybe didn't feel like they wanted to have access to that running track. The school district decided to still go ahead and build that running track because they needed, so they, they took those costs on. So if, if, if it depends on the idea of you guys wanting to have that lower fee, it'll just be have, that you'll have less of an amenity. Um, so, uh, the balance of this is, and we talked about, it's, you know, it's a lot of money, ten million dollars, a lot of money.
Yeah.
Um, and when we get the CMGC on board, we're hoping that that'll come more into focus and we'll have a clearer understanding of what that actual number will be. Um, but in reality, uh, you're not gonna build a rec center for, for that money.
Right.
You're not, there's just, it's impossible. So this is a, a really good opportunity for both sides and, uh, we had the same conversation with Centennial and now Centennial's gym is-
Right.
Is what Centennial's gym needs to be, so we're here to, we're here to help you to figure that out, but we would definitely advocate for your gym.
And we'll add too, that really, we're, we're the architects that design stuff, but we don't, we're not the ones in the control of the cost, so getting the contractor on board's gonna help. But right now, where we're at is we've kinda dreamed big and everything is, that we want is in there, but as we go through the design process, we're gonna be shrinking things down, tightening it up, uh, and getting a better understanding of how much things will cost, so, um, I say it's a big, big dream right now, but, you know, reality sets in and we'll, we all have budgets that we have to hit, so.
Right. Well, we appreciate you being here, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Jackson?
Just a quick comment. Um, partnering with the school district and the city only having access maybe in the morning, but evenings and the weekends, I just wanna see this space maximize to its fullest potential. It's extremely important to me, the bottom left, um, picture, that we have space like that for some additional cardio, bikes, some weights, especially for our senior citizen, citizen residents that like to walk and can do stuff like that. And then also the room where we'll have yoga and different things like that. I would love during the design process to take into consideration noise reduction and things like that, um, just to, uh, make that space, uh, a really great space for our community to access those different activities, so.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, one of the things that we had thought about even before we met with you guys, or after maybe our first meeting, uh, when we kinda made that list of, of priorities that you guys had, was having this cardio area that's a part of the front entry, that is not part of the gymnasium, that's not part of the running track. This cardio area at the bottom of the plan could very easily be, um, uh, channeled off from the school on a daily basis, but that's where that inter-local agreement is gonna be so important. And I would suggest, if you haven't already done it, I would suggest reaching out to Leighton and Clearfield and their, their respective-
Get a copy of theirs.
And, and, and get, kick the tires on what they've, their experiences have been over the number of years.
Right.
And maybe get their, boy, if we could've done it again, like, we love those, so, um, we want to maximize the use of it as well for you as well. So, um, uh, the fitness room, having the ability to be closed off from a loud gymnasium, whether it be on a Saturday, junior jazz, or when you're also trying to run a yoga class, that kinda thing, we're, we're cognizant of those things.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, now we are at item four, conflicts of interest, which we've already had discussion about. So we'll move to consent item, or the consent agenda, which is five A and B. Does someone, does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move consent items A and B to be approved, but also would like to include the recognition of those who are in attendance. I know that one is, the all-powerful, all-knowing Paul Toller is with us here, recently retired, and I'm not sure if Mike's here or not, um, I don't think I saw him, but, uh, is he here? No, not here?
Okay.
Okay. Will someone second that?
I'll second.
All right. Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
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 Sorry, I didn't hear John.
I didn't hear John neither.
They were stereo.
Oh, were they just, okay, all right, all right. Thank you, thank you everyone for moving that, uh, moving number five A and B. All right, we are at item six, which is-
You're gonna bring the discussion forward for the gym?
For the gym, oh yeah, right, item six, which is now the gym discussion. Okay, so, gym discussion will be, Jason, I guess, first of all, um, just in talking about this gym discussion, you've heard a little bit about the history of, of this. What happened with Centennial quite a few years ago is that the architects were going, they had the planned design, they had everything done and they had a yes, and then it became a council decision and it was a no, and so that cost them quite a bit of money. And so that's what we need to really clarify now, is we wanna make sure that we actually have an, an answer for them so that they don't move forward and then have to redesign the whole thing. Like they said, if we don't decide to partner for any reason, then it will be a smaller gym for them. Um, we've had conversations since I was on planning commission about this and I was on planning commission eight years ago, and, and just talking about how important the space was, not only for our students, but also, to me, it's really important to have this indoor track. I like to run, I'm not an avid runner, but I like to run, and I know so many people like to, like to have the indoor space. Farmington has a beautiful gym right now and it has an indoor track. I've used it a lot, I used to go down to Bountiful Rec Center, they have an indoor track and, and do that, and so I think this is a huge amenity for our community. Overwhelmingly, when we, um, produced our survey in, in preparation for the general plan, people wanted a recreation center. Um, some people wanted a pool to be included in that. We've gotten some bids on pools, pools are about forty-five million dollars, and that is because in order to do a pool that the, the school district wants to have in play would include Olympic-sized swim lanes, and it's just really, really, really expensive. And the maintenance on that is really expensive, and so this is a, um, great compromise and to most of us, um, at least I'm very much in favor of it, because this provides an amenity for our community that we don't have to pay for entirely on our own, there's shares, there's shared cost for maintenance as well, and it just provides something that people are saying that they want. We don't have any spaces like this in Kaysville. We will talk to what, the impact that this could have for other capital projects, and so we'll definitely talk about that, Laurie. You brought up some really good points about the fire station, so we'll talk about that. So, anyway, that being said, um, I, was it maybe two years ago or was it last year that I was in a meeting and the bond was issued for the, um, for these types of improvements? And we said, hey, school district, remember us, we wanna come back to the table and we wanna have these conversations. And so the school district came and met with us and we've been working on it ever since, and so I just think this is our last opportunity. They're remodeling Kaysville Junior High and as part of that remodel, and I don't know when that part will happen, but as part of that conversation, especially the fact that their gym is quite old and, and doesn't really work for them, this is our chance. So, anyway, I'll kick it over to you, Jason, if you wanna add anything and then we can have a robust discussion about it.
Absolutely, thanks, Mary. I'll just echo that, um, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on it, uh, the survey provided a lot of, uh, feedback from the community about the demand for this, and we know just from our, our really popular rec programming that there's a, a very big demand for, um, for both youth, uh, rec programs, but also a lot of the adult leagues and Cole can speak to that, there's a lot of programs that we can't, um, accommodate because there's a lack of space and, and that's the great thing about this space is it can be really programmed to whatever demand there is. If there's a demand for pickleball, you know, an adult league's, uh, pickleball or, or basketball, or, you know, um, as Councilmember Jackson pointed out, uh, more cardio for seniors or walking track for people in the mornings and the evenings, you can just basically put whatever it is, uh, that you want in there. I know we've had Cole brought up recently that one of the other cities has done there, I think their community band has kinda, uh, used that space, and then there's just a lot of different, uh, types of, uh, exciting programming that we could offer for, for generations, and it just, that's really what this is, is an investment into, uh, the entire city, not just, not just the youth, but for everybody, and so great opportunity to leverage, uh, you know, uh, the school district, as it's been talked about, uh, there's, there's rarely opportunities like that where you can partner together in such a great way, um, because the school district's use is gonna be completely opposite of when the, the city demand is, you know, and, uh, we're, we're gonna need it during the evenings and in the weekends and summers, um, when the school doesn't need it. So it just makes all the sense in that regard to, to partner, uh, to use taxpayer money wisely, uh, to, to get a really, a benefit for, for the schools and for, uh, the citizens in general. So we're excited about the opportunity. It is one of those that come along rarely and, and this might be and probably is the last opportunity for the foreseeable future, um, if not for potentially ever. Uh, so, so, um, we know that this is being carefully considered and, um, happy to hear input from, uh, the council tonight, questions, and hopefully, uh, get a little bit more clear direction as to, uh, what the next steps are.
And, and just to remind everybody, this is a work item, even though it is under action item, it's still considered a work item.
Correct.
Right, okay.
I, I will state this too, that tonight, we're, there's no binding agreements per se, I mean, there's no inter-local agreement being voted on or, or budget item being voted for, uh, but obviously the timeline that was kinda spoken to earlier is that the school district does wanna take advantage of the cheaper construction bids in the late fall and, and winter, so in order to do that, um, they wanna start design pretty soon and to get kind of a direction from the city, whether, uh, we're in or we're out. Um, I know there's still items that we can get into the weeds on, you know, funding options, um, and we're prepared to speak to that a little bit tonight if you'd like, but, um, we've got a half a million dollars of ramp sales tax funding coming in roughly every year, a little more than that. Uh, we can take a couple hundred thousand dollars of that, you know, put that towards retiring a bond. I believe the latest estimate that we came up with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dean and Marin, um, is if we did a twenty-five-year bond, that'd be something like thirty-two dollars a year for the average resident of Kaysville. That's the kinda cost we're looking at in terms of, uh, a tax increase to pay for that bond.
Okay, and, and really, we, um, since we, since this is a work item, we would like to, to know if we, you know, should move it to an action item, but really, we wanted to just make sure that people are aware. We wanna have this great conversation and make sure that people know that this is what we're, we're hoping to do and, and why. And, and so that's, that's the purpose of this conversation, council, so does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss about this?
And I'll start if you, oh, yeah?
Yes.
I'll start, uh, mostly because I've been chomping at the bit to answer Ms. Craigan's. Is it Ms. or Mrs. Do you say Mrs. or Mrs. I don't, I'm not sure, but anyway, um, honorable Craigins, uh-
(laughing).
No, okay, all right. Um, y- y- you know, you asked about the fire department and it, it, I mean, literally comes up every single budget session, every meeting we have, we're all super concerned about the response times that are occurring on the west side, um, especially with the increase of homes that are going in there. Um, it, it's a gigantic concern, and I think that these two are probably a little bit apples and oranges, only in the sense that I feel confident in saying that everybody on this panel would probably approve a bond to build a fire station tonight. What we are having heartache and angst over right now is staffing that fire station. So the building itself is, well, I mean, it's not that it's cheap, but the building itself is a pretty easy decision, but the staffing, which, uh, Councilmember Blackham always terms as the gift that keeps on giving, are the salaries that we'll have to pay those to staff and, and you would need to staff it with eight firefighters, um, which comes out to somewhere around one and a half million dollar increase a year-
Forever.
That we would have to come up with, and so, right-
Plus equipment.
Plus equipment and everything, but even equipment, you know, you can say like that's a one-time purchase a lot of the times, but the staffing, and, and I'm, I'm pretty accurate, I think, on those numbers, but I might be wrong, chief could, so, anyway, that's, know that we're discussing that and I don't feel like, uh, at least I can confidently say for myself that I wouldn't, if, if we were to choose to go with doing the gymnasium, that at no point in time would my decision on whether or not I would approve building a fire station would be altered by this decision. Um, the fire station to me will always be a yes as soon as we can figure out how we can pay for staffing without-
Well, and, and the other thing, uh, to go along with that is that we do know that we will get increases in volume on the west side. We don't have numbers yet that are saying, oh my gosh, you better do it immediately, but we, we know that we need to do it in the next couple of years. So we're definitely not putting off public safety or jeopardizing that in any way to do this.
The Farmington and Leighton staff?
Yes, and, go ahead, Councilmember.
Oh, I mean, I think what, Farmington and Leighton are both stations on that side and they will, they respond to, we all respond to each other's needs when there's a need. It, you know, um, if there's a fire or some other incident, it's who's ever closest and get there the quickest. And so with both Farmington and Leighton, uh, especially with the West Davis corridor, it helps those response times get pretty, pretty quick to somewhere there, sometimes even faster than, faster than what we can do on this side right now, especially with the traffic concerns, but that's just right now.
And then, uh, just, I think last comment, and then obviously, I'm sure we're gonna continue to talk about it, but, uh, you know, uh, city manager Jason did an excellent job saying it, but didn't enunciate it as well as like, or pound it down, is that we did approve ramp tax, or the ramp tax, which is people that are coming into our city, spending money at our store, at our stores, buying massively expensive boats and trailers, and a very small percentage of that yet adds up to a large amount, which comes to somewhere around five hundred and fifty to five hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year that we're collecting from those, from that ramp tax for recreation. The proposal is that half of the bond payment would be paid by that ramp tax. And so already, I think that we are creating a, uh, in my opinion, like he, like he said, I think it was lower, I thought it was like twenty-eight dollars annually if we did the twenty-five-year loan, but it was thirty. So, so essentially kinda what it, what it boils down to is whether or not having a track, having a place for kids, we talk about, one of the biggest things that, that the Parks and Rec Department struggles with is that they have a waiting list miles long of kids that can't play junior jazz or can't play volleyball or can't do any of these sports because we don't have the space for them to play. And it's so sad because right now what's taking over the sports is public, is private interests, and the private interests, if any of you have had children within the last ten or fifteen years, you'll find out that it's so expensive. And so the families that can't do these rec, I mean, not rec, uh, club, club sports are kinda stuck with nothing, and what we would be doing or asking our citizens to do is pay a dollar fifty a month, dollar forty-five a month to make that happen. And, you know, I, I know I walk into Maverick and get a drink and it's two dollars and twenty cents, you know, and so it's one less Maverick drink, I guess, that I have to provide that for those kids. I think that, at least for me, puts a little into context. Doesn't change that it's super expensive, but if we wait and do it later, it might be thirty million dollars, so, still something we wanna talk about, but those are my comments.
Councilmember Hunt?
Um, I think I have a lot of the same comments, but I just, uh, wanna appreciate, uh, Ms. Craigin for coming in and sharing her concerns. We emailed kinda back and forth and it really helped me kinda put this in perspective. Uh, I don't ever wanna feel like I'm, uh, sacrificing public safety and like, um, Councilmember Adams said, I don't feel like with this we are, uh, and Jason can kind of attest, I've been bothering him probably for months about the fire station and, you know, what's going on and how does this affect it, and even in our last meeting, you know, I wanted to make sure that if we were to bond for this, we could still then meet that obligation whenever we're ready for it. Another thing that came up with my, during my conversations with Jason is just that even if we wanted to build, I mean, of course we wanna build a fire station right now and, and Councilmember Adams touched upon the, on the staff budget, but even if we were going to say wanna do it right now, we're still not ready. We haven't done, you know, the, the study, we haven't done the engineering, so it wouldn't be happening this year anyways. Um, but I think, as has been touched on, we've got Farmington and Leighton that can give us, um, some aid. Um, we've talked about a lot of different funding possibilities for the fire station and a lot of those conversations are still ongoing, and so we're still just not ready for it. Um, and then, uh, to kind of move away from maybe the safety piece, other than to say that, you know, safety is the, the priority for all of us, I think, um, is, you know, I have spoken with residents, some of our elderly residents are like, oh, I'm so glad that I won't have to go walking at the mall anymore if we do this, so I think it does touch on more than just our young demographic. It's really something that anyone could use and maybe people who think, oh, I would never use that, will find a use. never use that, will find a use. I'll also say that I'm one of those parents who is not always on the ball and have definitely not gotten my kids into sports, because we ran out. So it's, it's not overblown, we do run out of space, there's more interest than we have the ability to, to cover. And as, you know, Councilmember Adams said, I, I kind of call that the gentrification of sport. I have a friend who, her, she spends $4,000, you know, for a season of basketball, for her kids to do basketball. And I know I can't afford to do that, I assume most of the families in Kaysville can't afford to do that. But I think it's a good opportunity to allow kids to have that good influence in their lives. I grew up doing sports, I ran track in college, and it changed my life. And I'd like to have that opportunity to do that for those kids. This kind of, I mean, I know it's a little bit of a stretch, it's one of those intangibles, but I do work with a group that works on substance abuse prevention in our city, and one of the things is that there's no, they struggle with pro-social involvement, sorry, I'm kind of rambling, but it's important to me. They struggle with pro-social involvement, so a lot of the kids have a hard time getting involved in the community, and so when they have a hard time getting involved, they'll go vandalize, or do drugs, or other things like that. So I think some of the intangibles of this could be, you know, decreased crime, or, you know, just better things for kids to be doing with their time. So that's kind of all my thoughts on that, I don't know, it was a lot, but.
No, it's great. Councilmember Blackham.
So, you know, I'm the, I am the one descending vote on the budget, but I, I want to make it very clear, though, that when I thought the opportunity for us to get this gym was going to be something that the city could participate in, I've been all in from day one, because I understand how hard it would be to get something like this in the future, and how much benefit there is from something like this. As a kid, maybe I don't look like a person you think loves sports, but I do. I absolutely love sports, I, I'm, if there was NHL, if one of the Stanley Cup games was on tonight, I may not be here. But, you know, in my whole life, you know, I remember getting off the bus, sneaking in the church, unlocking the window, and then going home, and then coming back later so I could get in the gym to play basketball. Hopefully, that will, we can provide that for somebody not to have to do that. But my biggest problem was is, there's so much being asked of the citizens. You know, I mean, we're talking about a 35% tax increase, we're talking about a 15% increase in your power, a temper, or 15% in your water, 10% in your power. We're talking about adding new personnel. I was really excited when I first heard about the gym, because I thought, well, you know what, this all has to come out of the same pocket of people, though. It's the people of Kaysville that have to pay for this. There's a huge benefit to me in having this gym. When we went down and visited the one we went to last Friday, there was 150 kids in there on a Friday morning down there playing basketball at nine o'clock in the morning. I thought, what better thing could there be to do for those kids at nine o'clock in the morning, I mean, at nine o'clock on a Friday morning when school's out, that they're together, they're, they're doing that, they're being competitive. And to have that provided for them, probably at very little or no cost, was a huge benefit to the community. And that's what I see, I see that. But I also understand, everything comes at a huge cost. And, and with the costs that we've had in the past few years, I mean, I think, we, we had a letter from Josh Bellnapp the other day that talked about, just replacing water lines has gone up 180% since COVID. Well, so has everybody's cost of living have gone up 180% since COVID. It's costing everybody a lot more to live, there's just not a lot of extra money around. And so I was hoping that the city would be able to see that a little more and say, yeah, let's put off the gifts that keep on giving, the personnel, let's take care of the people that we have. Let's, let's make sure that we, we keep up with their cost of living. And we do that at the expense of you, the people out there. We have to ask you to, for your property taxes, to pay for those people and keep our employees there. Yeah, we're asking a lot more of them, and I was hoping we could ask a lot more, and then we could come up with some creative ways to pay for this gym. I was hoping that possibly, you know, the, the 25-year bond and at $30, that, that's, that's reasonable, in my opinion, to provide a facility like this for the people of Kaysville that can be used at a very minimal cost. Because to have that in our community, I think, is a huge benefit, to keep our kids busy, to have a place they can go, have a place our adults can go in the wintertime, in the evenings, or early in the mornings, so they got a place they can do, I think that's great. But it's just the fact that the sewer district cost went up $130 this year. Taxes are going up, and it's just, your groceries have gone up. It just kept getting higher and higher and higher. And I thought, and so, I, I'm rambling on, but the point I'm trying to make is, this is something that really benefits our community. And I'm 100% in on the gym, because I think there's a huge benefit to it, and I think a lot, I think everybody benefits by keeping our youth busy, and having programs, and having adult recreation. You get to know your community, you, you end up over there meeting people in your community you didn't know, neighbors that might live only three or four houses, or three or four blocks from you, you end up knowing, and you, you have common things with them, and, and then your kids know each other at school. So this is what I call community, and I think this is what builds a strong community like we have in Kaysville. It's the bottom-line cost that I have the hardest part with, and as my colleagues know, I'm cheap to a fault, and, but that's the way I've always been. I've always had to live off my revenues. My revenues is what I had, I had, my budget was based on my revenues, not what I was hoping I was going to get, it's what I had. So I see these huge increases, and it really, it's hard for me, but this is one of those that I can see a huge benefit. I wished I could vote yes on this specifically, because I'm all in for it, and vote nay against the budget, because I think there's too much there, and it's asking too much all at once. I'd like to see it spread out over a few years. So that's kind of where I'm coming from, but I don't want people to think I'm voting against the budget because I don't believe in this gym, because I do believe in this gym 100%. And I've always been all in, even though I may sound like I'm not once in a while. But, because I can see a absolute huge benefit to having a facility like this in our city, and I don't see an opportunity of ever having it again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We, we could, we could just keep going. And, and we will, as we have budget conversations, you know, I will just quickly mention, Councilmember Blackham mentioned, hey, we're having this huge increase, and philosophically, you know, of course, we all have different opinions, and that's great. I, I personally think that incrementally, doing truth and taxation every year helps to minimize that large impact over time. I think if we do it every year, and we do, we capture the cost of living increase, we, we consider inflation, and, and we're really transparent about the costs that are rising, then there's minimal impact to our budget every year if we maintain. One of the things that we've done really well in Kaysville is we've been, we've tried to be very conservative, however, we got behind, you know, in terms of making sure that we take care of our, of our residents, and in the fact the taxpayer's expense, well, I mean, our, our staff, as a taxpayer and a resident, I'm benefiting from the staff members. I'm benefiting because I have police protection, we have fire services, we have public, you know, we have water, we have roads. All of those things that are truly things that we pay for, we all benefit from. And so I just kind of wanted to make that, that point clear, that, yeah, we, we do have a little bit of a tax increase that we're considering this year, but it's because we have not kept up over the last couple of years. We've, we've tried to just really tighten our belts, because we knew things were coming, but now it's catching up to us. And so we did have to raise some, some money to, to make sure that our competitive, our wages were competitive. And we also had to borrow from fund balance to make sure that we were able to keep up with some capital expenses. And I think instead of maybe doing that, as we look forward, what we need to do is incrementably, incrementally maintain that every year, and so that we don't have a bigger, a bigger increase. And now that we're going to be to the point of being caught up, I think that that's, that that would be a good move. And so, anyway.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
And I'm not sure how properly to do this, but I make a motion that we approve the staff to go forward with the plans for the Kaysville Junior High Gym.
Thank you for that motion.
I'll second that.
Keeps me from rambling, okay. Councilmember Oaks.
I should have done that 20 minutes.
You should have, you should have.
Aye.
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 Okay, all right. Motion carries. All right, thank you for that, thanks for keeping us in line. Okay, we are going back to action item, which is now, well, it's still 6A. So this is a rezone, rezone of 4.88 acres of property located at approximately 13 West, 950 North, for the Holland Group. Melinda.
All right, Mayor, members of the council, I will try and get through these next two items as quickly as possible. Okay, so, as mentioned, this is a rezone, shoot, for the Holland Group, and I don't know why my slides aren't advancing. All right, there we go. So this property is over in the southwest quadrant of the city, it's right off of 950 North exit in the West Davis corridor. In fact, this property actually was surplus by UDOT when they finished the road construction of West Davis corridor, they no longer needed this property. And so the Holland Group was successful in acquiring the property through UDOT. And I'll just jump right into the particulars of the area, here's an aerial shot that just shows again where that interchange is. And this particular property does butt up to the Farmington city boundary, which is to the south, and then to the east of the property. The property right now is zoned residential agriculture, and has been undeveloped, it previously served as the Mink Farm, for those of you who are familiar with that history of the city. When we, when we look towards rezoning, what a property, what we'd like to do is look at our general plan and see if there's support for that. So I'll just go through the different elements of the general plan on this item, and then the next rezone as well. The first thing we look at when that comes up is our future land use map. And the 2022 general plan had a very robust public involvement process. And as part of that, they surveyed the community and kind of looked towards the future, and in an ideal situation, how do we want to see property developed or redeveloped? And so this particular portion out there, in the bottom area, you can see that's in red, that is intended to be general commercial. So this particular element of the future land use map doesn't necessarily support the rezone, because it's light industrial instead of the general commercial. However, the permitted uses in our light industrial zone really mirror that of general commercial, primarily the retail sales and services, and so there is some overlap there. And just in general, I, I would consider our light industrial zone, because it is a very light industrial, it's not heavy manufacturing, I would consider that to be somewhat of a commercial zone. So I'll go through, there's some support in the general plan from a couple of our different chapters. Chapter one is the land use and placemaking plan, and there are two different goals within that plan that support this. Goal three is to improve commercial profile of the city, and specifically, it speaks to an objective of leveraging property out by the West Davis corridor for type of commercial opportunities. So this goal definitely supports that. It also has a goal of ensuring that land uses are compatible and have adequate buffers. And so, a little bit of context with this, in speaking with Mr. Holland prior to making application for the two rezones this, this evening, we also talked about if there would be a mixed-use project. Our mixed-use zone requires that you really have intended users in mind, and you have to have a very refined project that's brought forward. And so in lieu of that, he elected to separate the two parcels, so this would be a light industrial, and then the companion item next is RM, which could somewhat be a mixed-use type of a project. But the benefit of that is, if I, let me just go back to the aerial shot here, but you can see on the south in Farmington, and then to the east, there is residential property. There's also some buffering there with the creek, and there's a 30-foot easement on the south side of the property that is required based on the floodplain. And so, that said, having, especially to the east of the light industrial, the next item that would be RM, I would consider those townhomes to be a compatible use with the residential uses. So it does soften those uses and creates a more compatible use to the adjacent residential. The other chapter that has support for this is our chapter five, which is our economic development and prosperity chapter. And again, this isn't necessarily a mixed-use rezone, but the two coming together, and we specifically put the light industrial rezone on the agenda first, because we want to make sure we get that commercial, and then, and then if the council so chooses, right, you could approve the RM, but it could function somewhat as that horizontal mixed use that we've approved a few other projects within the city. So this was before the planning commission a couple different times, once in April, and then again in, in May. And the planning commission, with their discussions in April, had some initial concerns about some of the uses allowed in the LI zone, maybe not being very compatible with those existing residences that were there. So they had two asks at that planning commission meeting. One was to come back with a development agreement that would limit some of those uses, and the second one was to present some type of a site plan. So this next slide just shows a sample or a conceptual site plan. I do want to make it very clear that because Mr. Holland doesn't have any defined users, this site plan, especially on that west side, where the light industrial zone would be approved if the council chooses to, this could change based on when he does find those users and solidify those. So as this has shown currently, that north, northernmost box is shown as a fuel canopy with a convenience store, some retail, and then some flex space in the back, which is another thing I wanted to mention, that when Mr. Holland was looking at, you know, should we look at general commercial or light industrial, he felt like the light industrial gave a little bit more flexibility, as far as how retail is kind of more functioning nowadays with that flex or warehouse space that you see. Coincidentally, and this actually very surprised me when I first started working with Kaysville, but Smiths Market Place is zoned light industrial, so it does allow for those retail uses that we would like to see. But it also gives that flexibility for some of that, let me see, kind of the newer phase of retail, where you do have more of that flex type of space that's in demand. So there was also another site plan that was, a sample site plan that was submitted, but it showed a car wash. And you may recall that we changed our, where we added a car wash ordinance, and given the proximity of the residences here, car wash wouldn't be allowed, so we did not submit that as a sample site plan. But this is just a look at what that could be, and part of what the planning commission wanted to see was just how that access would function for the entire site. Mr. Holland can speak to this as well, but when he purchased the, the property from UDOT, they specifically prohibited any access to that site from Sunset Drive. So that's on the left-hand side, you see that intersection there. So all access to the site will have to come from Devi Drive, and then they can also have access east of that, it's a Kaysville Road, and so we control the access there. But UDOT, given the proximity to that interchange, would not allow that access there. So all, the next couple of slides are just the uses in the light industrial zone that we had, that Mr. Holland felt comfortable striking out. So those uses have been eliminated from the development agreement as an allowance. And so if approved, this development agreement would essentially function as the zoning code for this property. And so when those uses would come in, we would make sure that anything that's submitted would align with the development agreement. So there's those couple uses on this slide that were removed, and then from the conditional uses, those three items, three, four, and five that were removed. So again, this was before the planning commission a couple different times. During the public hearing on April 24th, there were multiple comments that were received, and there were residents from both Farmington and Kaysville. And I do, given the size of the property and the location, we did do what I would just say in overnoticing, we wanted to make sure that the individuals had an opportunity to know what was going on. And specifically, even though they're Farmington residents, we still wanted to know what they had to say. had to say. So most of the comments, I think, were from Farmington residents, but they had concerns about traffic, pedestrian safety, parking noise, and density, which pertains more to the next item. But there was concerns about the proximity of the school and then even environmental concerns. Again, I mentioned that the planning commission directed staff and the applicant to come back with some, develop an agreement to just kind of eliminate some of the concerns that they had. So this was presented again to the planning commission on May 8th, and they did vote four to zero to recommend approval based on the limitations that we've put into that development agreement. So based on the recommendation from planning commission, we are recommending the city council approve the rezone tonight with that development agreement. And I know Mr. Holland is here, if you have any questions for staff or for the applicant.
I do have a question, Mr. Holland, for you. My understanding is that under light industrial, storage units are a permitted use. Is that true?
I think it is.
And so I would ask you if you would be willing to strike
Yes, number six listed there.
... storage units.
Yeah, absolutely.
Will you strike that? Okay, we don't want storage units there.
No, I don't either.
Okay, okay, good. And it's probably not the highest and best use for the property, I don't know. But if you would do that, I would appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? There's just...
Can I, thank you, Mayor. That was one of my two issues, that and tunnel car washes.
Okay, good.
And so, yeah.
That was a joke from Melinda, by the way.
We take care of that.
Right, okay. Okay, any other questions?
I don't have any for Phil, but I think I have one for staff. Okay, Melinda, I know we talked about this. I know we said that the state preempts us. I don't even, I don't really want to talk about this because I feel like it's going to cause things to happen like karma-wise, but cannabis things. I know other cities have had issues with cannabis manufacturing. Could we deal with that in development agreement or does the state preempt the development agreement as well?
So, yes, the state would preempt anything locally we could do. And to give a little bit of background of that, council member asked me earlier this week if any of the cannabis, like a production or a distribution facility would be allowed there. I hadn't looked at that state code for a number of years, but I went back and looked at that. So the state of Utah did preempt any local authority for cities to regulate that on our own. However, there is a provision in that state code that does not allow any cannabis facilities within 600 feet of a residential area. And so given that proximity to the Farmington zoning, our own, the park, I think it's Park Lane, that's just to the north across the street, and then of course that RM, if it's that, if that's approved, there would not be an allowance for any type of cannabis uses there. I did speak with Mr. Holland earlier this evening. And on an interesting note, so in 2019, the state legislature held a special session in September, essentially to preempt the local authority. And what was happening with that was that between the provisions that state code had, the concerns that a lot of local municipalities had, they started passing ordinances that would have prevented dispensaries or production facilities to be located within their cities. And between that and then the complication that there were a lot of property owners or landlords that didn't want that type of use in their buildings, even concerns about, you know, the cannabis being illegal at the federal level. It was very, very difficult for the medical cannabis industry to find locations. And so that's why the state came back in and preempted that local authority. But there are some protections there for residential with that 600-foot barrier.
Awesome. And then just one more question. I know we talked about, you know, reasons why this isn't being made, you know, the whole lot into one mixed use. But could you kind of just touch on, I don't know, I feel like when I was on the planning commission and then first started on the city council, in my mind, mixed use, and obviously this isn't mixed use, but mixed use was, you know, like, you want cute little apartments on top of cute little shops. Can you just speak to why maybe that wouldn't work here? Because I'm always holding out hope that we're going to find somewhere where that's going to work.
Well, horizontal mixed use, and actually, let me go back to the earlier comments, I don't know if I completed my thought, but when I spoke with Mr. Holland earlier today, he did indicate that cannabis would not be a use that we want to see on that property. But that said, horizontal, so you have horizontal and then you have vertical mixed use. We have approved two vertical mixed use projects in the city, and we have one that is also horizontal. That'll be the one that's under construction right now north of Smiths. I think honestly, and Mr. Holland probably has an answer that would be better than mine, specifically since, you know, it's, they look a lot more of the financial feasibility of things. But a lot of times with those, those vertical mixed uses, you really need to be on higher traffic area. And while this is on a major corridor and there's an interchange there, I don't know if that would be the best fit for that vertical mixed use. So, but I can defer to Mr. Holland to give a little bit more enlightenment on that.
Do you have anything else?
Exactly. So I do have one up the street in Farmington that is, it's actually pretty interesting. There's live work on the bottom, there is office on the side, three stories, and then attached to it is residential. One of the reasons that works there versus here is that availability of, it's kind of in the center of everything, where this is a little more outskirts-ish.
Makes sense. Okay, anyone else? Oh, councilmember Oaks.
You know, I drove, I drove by it on my way, on my way home from the airport today, just to have it in my mind, because I was just concerned about spacing. I saw the drawing, you know, and it's a perfect location for a convenience store or service station. I mean, that's going to, you know, since we don't have the one on 200 North, we thought we would. And I think people will actually very much appreciate it there, even though they'll complain. But I was concerned about that, that flex, whatever it ends up being. I think that the spacing looks perfect. And you have those, I think the Russian Oaks and the scrub oaks behind it already with barrier with, with the dry stream bed that will give separation from the homes that are the residential that are on the other side. I think it's a great plan for what you have. I was concerned about the LI, you know, when you'd asked for more flexibility. And the concern was, so what do you need more flexible? But understanding that Smiths, that that area was LI, and I don't have any concern. So I think, I think it's a good plan, yeah.
Ready to make a motion? Does that, it sounds kind of like a motion.
I am. I, I will make a motion that we approve the rezone of 4.88 acres of property to LI for the Holland Group.
May I second?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, 6B rezone of 3.77 acres located at 16 East 950 North with a PRUD, oh, residential to RM with a PRUD overlay zone.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so this is the property directly east of the one we just spoke about. And again, 3.77 acres. The future land use map, or excuse me, the current zoning again is residential agricultural. And actually, let me just go back to this, this first slide. So especially when you talk about a rezone for residential, a lot of times the biggest concern is that, is that density. So with that RA, which is a half acre requirement, right, or is that an acre? No, it's, it's the true half acre, that's right. So they could, you know, between the two properties, or with the, those 3.7 acres, they could fit about seven, seven dwelling units. They are requesting 56, although in theory, the RM zone could allow for 58. So they are two less than maxing out that density request. Again, an aerial shot just showing the location. Keyesville is this, you see the boundary there between Farmington and Keyesville? You have an LDS church right here to the right. There are three homes right here next to it. And then again, you have Hates Creek and those properties in Farmington. I did do some measurements real quick earlier today just to confirm. It's about 100 feet between the property lines here in Farmington and the property line of this, of the Holland's property. And then again, there's that 30-foot setback, which I'll go over setbacks in some future slides. But there is a good amount of distance between those properties to the south. So the, again, the current zoning is that RA. The future land use map shows that this would be general commercial. The 2002 general plan has five guiding principles that kind of umbrella everything else that comes in through the plan. And one of those guiding principles is that we would look to provide diverse housing options within the city. The vast majority of housing within Keyesville is single family. So some attached multifamily townhome styles is something that would provide more diversity than what we currently have. I'll go again just through a couple of the chapters that offer support for this. Chapter one, again, is our land use and place making plan, and it speaks again to having that diverse housing, providing housing that is options for different price points and even different types of lifestyles and life cycles. So the next chapter that we talk about is our chapter three, which is our housing and neighborhood chapters. That's also where our moderate income housing plan is. And I know the council's very well of that, aware of this, but for those in the audience that may not be, the state over the last, almost maybe 10 years now, has had very much a focus on housing affordability and moderate income housing. And starting in 2017 and then again in 2019, and every legislative session since then, basically, they've expanded those requirements that cities have for moderate income housing. So one of the things that we have to do annually is report to the state on every application that comes through the city that would potentially fit within those guidelines of moderate income housing. This is certainly one of those. And so in 2022, when we adopted this plan, the city council selected five different items from a menu that are listed in state code as to what we could do in Keyesville to meet some of those moderate income housing requirements. And one of those is this goal number one, to look to provide a full range of housing, or excuse me, that's the goal, but the objective, this is the one from state code that just says to rezone for densities that are necessary to facilitate the production of moderate income housing. That doesn't necessarily mean the end result would be moderate income housing, because there's a lot of factors that go into affordability. But this is kind of the commitment we have made to the state saying, we'll do our part. And so when these applications have come through, what we committed to do is to give a strong recommendation or a strong consideration to those applications that, in this case, this one doesn't meet the future land use map. And so we weren't necessarily tied into giving a recommendation of approval, but we were tied into giving a strong recommendation or strong consideration of approval. So I'll just go through the site plan and talk just a little bit more about what their proposal is. So our RM zone does have a requirement for open space. And this project, they're looking to provide about 42,000 square face, which is, or square feet of open space, which is about an acre. Required is 32,000, so they are besting that by 10,000 square feet. One of the things that commonly is a concern with projects like this is parking, especially because we have parking in the winter and we don't allow on-street parking because of snow plowing. This actually has a lot of very generous parking options. Each unit would have a two-car garage and then space, you can see these rear-loading driveways. So two vehicles could fit on each driveway, and then they have some guest parking that is also provided. I do want to go back and just mention that you can see in the site plan here, Road A, this would be a public road and that road would be used to also access the light industrial that you just approved. The roads inside the RM development would be private roads, which is why we need that PRUD overlay. That's how we authorize our private roads within the city. So the, one of the things that you can do through a development agreement is to essentially kind of create or write your own zoning ordinances or zoning regulations. So in this development agreement, we do have setbacks that are proposing that differ, I think, a little bit from the RM and what that has. Again, the rear setbacks for each of the townhomes would be 20 feet, and that would allow those vehicles to park on, two vehicles to park on the driveway going into that rear-loading garage. Side setbacks from the internal roads would be 10 feet, front setbacks would be a minimum of 15 feet. And then there are setbacks between buildings that they're proposing to be 10 feet. I already spoke about that rear, that south property line would have a minimum 30-foot setback. And then on the east and west property lines, those would be a minimum of 10 feet. And then the north property setback is proposed to be 11 feet. So this is just a little bit more detail of those open space requirements and how that calculates out in our code. It's a formula based on how many units are in a particular building. So again, it required 32,000, but they're providing 42,000. I'll just kind of go real quickly through these next several slides that just show the open space and amenities that are, they're proposing. Those are solidified also in the development agreement. You have here a fire pit area playground, some cornhole and bocce ball, gazebo, and then for dog moms like me, they have a little dog run. This is kind of a fun concept, but they have a hammock area, which I mentioned this in the planning commission meeting, and Mindy made fun of me for commenting it this way, but I'm going to say it again, hammocking is a thing that kids nowadays do. So I think this is kind of a fun concept to bring kind of a modern gathering area to what, what kids just go out and do. There also was this chalkboard area for younger kids. Here's some renderings of what they're proposing those townhomes to look like. I did want to mention, there is a provision in the development agreement, the applicant has asked for a height increase. All of our residential zones are capped at 30 feet. They are asking for 33 feet in order to accommodate three stories, but also a pitched roof. And then this may be seen counterintuitive, but I have a couple of slides that just show the difference. They certainly can do a three-story townhome with 30 feet, but you would have different massing, which is kind of how a building feels when you're at that, like, human scale. So with 30-feet allowance, they would, they would do a flat roof. This picture up on the left, those are actually the townhomes that are located over in Farmington. And then I just grabbed a few screenshots off of the internet that would show. It just does have a different feel when you have those pitched roofs. And when Mr. Holland and I spoke about this earlier today, those, those block massing, those flat roof townhomes really kind of have a very urban feel. And I don't necessarily feel like that fits Keyesville. It's just something to consider and discuss for the council. And then here's just another slide that, that shows those, oops, it looks like I had the same slide in there twice, but just a consideration point for the council to discuss. This next slide shows an addition that Mr. Holland asked to make to the development agreement. This was not presented to the planning commission, but the city attorney and I felt comfortable enough presenting this to the council this evening. It was important to the applicant to have homeownership encouraged in this area. And so this provision would eliminate or mitigate some of the things that have been happening in other communities where you have these townhomes that are built and they're bought up by investors. So it would limit that, you know, a single group or individual could only own two. So that gives some, some, I think...
Is this a point of where we can open up discussion or you want to wait till you're all done? Because this is the one item I have.
I'll defer to the mayor.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak to this, so go for it.
Great.
Okay, because, you know, as we've been talking about changing a little bit of the... Okay, because, you know, as we've been talking about changing a little bit of the development in Kaysville and allowing some more of the denser developments, one of the biggest things that we have talked about is making sure that we're getting owner occupancy. Owner occupancy, to me, is the most, the biggest deal out of allowing a higher density in Kaysville, because I consistently see these being built in Farmington, and they're being all bought up by developers, and it has not helped anybody get into a home at all. All it's done is kept the rent extremely high and kept the availability of homes to buy. I don't want to put the absolute thumbscrews on Mr. Holland and his development, but I would love to see a 60%, and to me, 60% is very reasonable, owner occupancy, and not more than one can be sold to a developer, which means the remainder of his could be sold to outside developers, but they can only get one, but 60% has to be, and I thought 60%, this is forgiving, because we've talked about this before, as we've had meetings, we've said 80% owner occupancy. Well, to me, 60% would be something that I would want to see in here. I would have a hard time approving this without something very specific like that saying, there has to be at least 60% ownership with not more than one being sold to investors at a time. I think that's being very reasonable, because if we don't do something like that, I have constantly watched somebody go in and buy entire buildings of those townhomes in Farmington. I remember one time Garbet Homes was building these four-unit ones, and they had about six or eight buildings, and, and they were down to the point where, we're not starting these buildings, we haven't got them sold, we're thinking about lowering our prices. I thought, whoa, that's great, you know, that's exactly what we want. A week later, he starts the second and third building, I says, what happened? He says, a guy out of Denver came and bought them all. You know, and so it absolutely took 12 homes out of the inventory for what we say we didn't have here in Utah, was an inventory of our young families to start in equity and buying families. So to approve something like this is way, is going way out of my comfort zone. So to me, to have it be at least a minimum of 60% owner occupancy with not more than one out of the remaining inventory, that doesn't mean he can't sell the first 10 to the investors to get his money coming in, but only one unit to each investor and at least 60%. That's something I'm very adamant about, because we're trying to do something different here, but the whole point of everything that we've heard from the governor and the state is we need to get our young families in homes that they can purchase and start building equity, and it's the number-one investment, biggest investment anybody ever makes, and as long as you're throwing it away to rent, you're not gaining anything. So that's, I wanted to, that, that, this is, you brought it up, this is that item, and that's, that's kind of where I'm at with it. I mean, I want to hear my council, if they have any discussion on it.
I think that would be a, a great point when we do report on our moderate income housing, if this is approved. I think that would be a really great item for us to include in that report, because you're correct, that is definitely, the mindset has been towards that owner occupancy and that ownership and getting that, you know, that economic wealth that you can have when you're building equity into something instead of paying someone else's equity. And of course, I, when the time is appropriate, Mr. Holland can address that.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if you could address why no more than three, so two units per owner, but we can wait until you're done and when you come up and give your presentation.
All right, we'll push pause on that discussion then. There's only just a couple of slides left, which is just the report of what happened at the planning commission. So we did hold a public hearing on April 24th. Again, most of the commenters were from Farmington City, but nonetheless, there were concerns about density, building height, townhomes being out of character for the area. That is an additional consideration, again, between that 33 feet, allowing for a pitched roof versus that flat height, or that flat roof. Increased traffic and parking, I should, I should mention there, Mr. Holland did submit with his projects a traffic analysis. Essentially, traffic definitely will change patterns over there, but there wasn't anything alarming enough that would cause any need for mitigation. So there's nothing proposed in the development agreement for that. And then there was concerns, there is a school crossing right there, just east of the property. There's a hawk signal, there's already a crossing guard there. So I spoke earlier this week with our city engineer, Mr. Fisher, who's here this evening as well, and essentially, when you do have a hawk signal, a crossing guard, that's essentially as safe as you can get with a crossing, especially on a street such as 950 North. But there were concerns also about the pathway that's there and maybe conflict with pedestrians and cyclists. There was a strong sentiment towards single-family homes, and we did have one individual that spoke in favor of the project. The planning commission at the end of the night concluded to vote 4-0 to recommend approval. So that's all I have, unless there's more questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the staff report. All right, Phil, what do you think?
Thank you very much for your time on both of these items. And then staff's always great to work with here in Kaysville City, which is really important if you work with a lot of staffs throughout the state. So I'll get to what you guys were saying. The first thing I want to say is you can see from everything that we're trying to put in front of you that we're not trying to maximize. We've, if you look at the parking table, we are parked. We've considered parking to be in townhomes, especially over the last 15 years as they've become more prevalent in our, our market, Davis County. Parking has evolved. We've tried to introduce the 20-foot driveway, which a lot of townhomes do not have in Davis County. And so two-car garage with a driveway that accommodates, I've done 18-foot garages or driveways in this city, and we've added two more feet just to accommodate maybe somebody's F-150. That's important to us.
It is.
Yeah. The other thing is the open space. There is some, we crafted together some amenities that actually mean something. We were thoughtful in that, so we're excited for the people to be able to live here and have a unique experience in Kaysville. There are great townhome developments here in our city, but we've tried to pay extra attention to those amenities. Let's talk about ownership. If you'll go back to that development agreement, I appreciate what you said, and so I do own multiple developments, and we rent those out, yeah, but I do that in other cities. This particular property, when I bought it, I knew that it would be a for-sale development as far as if I were to seek what I'm seeking. That was important to me. One thing we drafted here is to kind of talk through that ability. If you, if I can read it to you, do you have it in your screens? Is that what you guys are looking at?
Yeah.
The developer affirms that the project is intended to be a for-sale residential community primarily for owner occupants. It's important. Not many developers would make a statement like that, but I don't want any, let's keep going here. "The declaration of CCNRs recorded against the property shall include occupancy and rental restriction expressly prohibiting the bulk purchase or ownership of three or more units in the project by," this is important, "an institutional investor." You were spot on. Those are, exist in our country right now. "Corporate entity or individual. These restrictions shall also be consistent with Kaysville City Code and any other applicable municipal regulations governing residential rental properties." So I feel like we, we, we look at that and we say, yeah, there is an issue, we want owner occupancy, there's not a lot of, especially in Kaysville, of this type of product type. Let me talk a little bit about the three or more units, which would be-
Two.
Two. Now, why in the world would we do that? Okay, so if you've been around long enough, like I have, in this business, you've seen just about every buyer of these, and believe it or not, grandma comes in handy as a buyer in a lot of cases. And it seems a little funny, and it doesn't always have to be grandma, it could be mom and dad, and, but there is always somebody that comes in and buys a couple as they pass, I was just about to say wealth, but you don't have to have a ton of money, but when you pass along to the next generation, I have seen it in many developments like this where that individual will go buy multiple units and put them in their kids' names or maintain them until they pass on. And so it's actually a repetitive thing that takes place. So when we had that two in there, that's what we were thinking. So just that. But there's a laundry list of things, and I'm actually okay with, I've said it, and I'm willing to stand behind it. I mean, if, if one item important to you is we want 60% of these to be owner occupied, I'm absolutely okay with that. Our intention is to make this a for-sale residential development. Any other specific questions on some of these items?
I do have a question. How big do you anticipate these properties to be? You want three stories, which I totally get, I, I support that. Over a flat roof, I think they look much better to have a pitch, but how big, how big will they be?
So 18 to about 22.
22, okay. I think that's a good sweet spot. And the bottom floor won't just be a live-work space, it'll be designed as a, as a part of the living space?
So yeah, there'll be the garage and then probably a landing area of some sort with a flex area, whether it could be an office or something similar to that.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
And then two floors for living. So the 18, will the 18 to 2200 include the garage?
No.
So that's not a-
That's livable square foot.
That's livable square foot, okay, thank you.
So that's, that's decent size.
You're not proposing these as live-works units? These are just, it's just a garage with a, like a living room on the main floor.
Yeah, flex area down below.
Flex area. I've seen them as playrooms and, yeah, stuff like that. Okay. Personally, Phil, I think this is, this is a great project. I appreciate your willingness to, to build in Kaysville and, and your investment here in our city, and, and your flexibility in, in understanding this is the kind of product that we want, and, and it's what my kids are looking for, so they, you know, they don't want the, the dream that we have with a big yard that, you know, they have to take care of, so. Townhomes is kind of what they and most of their friends are wanting. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, some comments.
Sure.
So, yeah, thanks for your explanation of that, and I think my sticking point would be along with Councilmember Blackham at the 60%. I'm okay with leaving the language of no more than three or more units, because I, I feel like you gave a very reasonable explanation of that, but with that 60% in place, that's very important to me as well, so thanks, Blackham, for mentioning that. Parking is a huge deal for me. I can't stand these type of developments that just don't include enough parking for not only the family, but for visitors, and so I'm really pleased with the, the garages, the, the long driveways, and I, I looked for extra parking off the street, and I saw some of that. So thank you for doing that, because that would be a major sticking point for me. I'm also a big fan of the pitched roofs, and so I would be okay with 33 feet, even 35 feet at the max with the pitched roof. And then design elements and landscaping, that's very important to me as well. But I, I applaud you, because we have a lot of developers come in, and I can tell you worked with the city and did your due diligence, so I really appreciate that. And just the fact that you would commit to a 60% owner occupancy rate is fantastic, so, yeah, my support.
Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Mine's probably for staff. Since it's their private roads, what about snow removal and trash pickup?
Did you say staff?
I, I, who should answer that one?
Well, so, I don't know, would you have individual cans or dumpsters?
Individual cans, and then a private company would take care of that.
Should, should be allowed for maneuverability of the, the trash pickup within that, and then snow, snow removal would be up to the HOA.
Yeah. Okay, so would, you'd have to have an HOA really with that big and that small? Okay, no, that's, those are the things that stuck out when I saw the private roads, so.
How, how soon would you be hoping to break ground on a project like this?
Yeah, this year.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow. Yesterday.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, great.
Let me find the agenda item first. Okay, I make a motion to approve the rezone of 3.77 acres located at 16 East, 950 North from RA to RM multifamily with a PRUD overlay on its zone, and the development agreement with the changes of adding the 60% ownership and the 33% height for the pitched roofs.
33 feet.
33, sorry, 33 feet. I said percent, sorry.
All right, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Good luck, Phil, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, here we go. We are on item C, consideration of amendments to the fiscal year 2026 tentative budget. Thank you for sticking around Accounting Department for us. Okay.
Do we need to extend the meeting?
Oh, we'll be done by 10, right, guys? Are we laughing?
Did you see the 200 pages of his, that he's got?
Should, should, should we, should we approve or-
Should we just get on with Dexter's?
No, I mean, make a motion to approve extension or something, you know, just in case.
Sure, we, we can definitely do that, Councilmember. Feel free.
I, I just, make a motion that we approve the, give ourselves the ability to go past 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Yuck.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Nay.
Okay.
Oh, wait, how many people said nay?
My body's on Eastern time.
Okay, in the event that that happens, we won't have to interrupt the discussion, so thank you, Councilmember Oaks. Okay.
Mayor, thanks, and council for a big night. So we've obviously had three budget work sessions over the last few months, and I, I think we have a pretty good idea based on the feedback we've received of what amendments the council is interested in. So I, obviously, the deputy fire chief position has been one of consideration, as well as the change in the cost to the gymnasium, going from $7 million, which is what's in the current tentative budget, to, to factoring in the payback cost of $10.5 million gymnasium. And then Councilmember Hunt had brought up increasing the amount for sidewalks, I believe, at the last work session. So those are the three items that we know of. All we're looking for tonight is some direction on whether you want us to go back and readjust the budget with, with those items amended. So any other items that you'd like to bring up, of course?
Sure, I'd like to take away all the new positions, take the water to 10% and power to 5% and include the gym.
And let me add this to you. Why are you laughing, Mike?
I just, I'm serious, you know, I mean, that's, I, it's such a tough, it's tough for me, this is really tough. I mean, like I said, I'm a nay on the budget, but I'm okay on the gym, and, but somehow I'd like to separate that out, because I do like to show my support of the gym, but I don't support the budget the way it is.
Totally understand. I, I would suggest that perhaps we remove the deputy fire chief or fire person. However, knowing that we are going to continue to have conversations about a West Side Fire Station, and we'll need to staff that and figure that out, so I would like to have everyone entertain that thought. I do believe that we need the other two positions, though, I, I really do, just because we, we kind of, we, we didn't kind of, we put a freeze on new positions for a couple of years, which, which was great. It, it gave us time to evaluate, you know, the positions that we actually needed, and I know there were much more positions asked for and requested, but it really gave staff- I know there were much more positions asked for and requested, but it really gave staff time to, I think, go through. And Jason, you did your, your study and provided really good information for us. So I appreciate the fact that, that we did that. We did a pause, but I still think that the data shows that we need at least those two positions. Assistant attorney and another sergeant.
Can I ask Councilmember Blackham a question?
Sure.
I'm just curious. When we started this, were you a yes on an assist attorney but no on the rest of the positions? Were you okay with one new position?
Originally, I would have said no. I would have wanted to contract that deputy attorney because there are a lot of cities around here that do contact with the county attorney's office and at about half the price of what it's going to cost us. And knowing that I really wanted the gym, you know, to be a part of it, I figured there would be an increase. And I also wanted to make sure that we covered the employees for the cost of living and that $50 that was going to cost more for their insurance and things like that. So originally, and, and I thought, you know, I gotta have some sort of give to me a little bit, you know? And so once all, I thought all the departments got together and agreed that was the only position that they would, were in favor of, I thought, okay, I should probably be in. And so at the first original meeting, I thought that's where we were and I was okay doing that. It was about $70,000 more than what I was hoping to pay. But I thought, you know, Nick made a good argument for it. I don't know why we get so many cases when we're the second safest city to live in. We've, we gotta have more prosecutors than, so, you know, it's, it's one of those things and it, everything comes at such a cost. And it was just a combination of all the costs that keep hitting people. And you just don't have the revenues to have those costs. And I like incrementally doing things. I, I would love to see us just contract it and see how it works for a couple of years. You know, that's what I was hoping for, but I had come to the conclusion that I could back that one position.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is because I'm, I'm a yes on the assistant attorney. I agree with Mayor to remove deputy fire chief at this time, but I'm also, I'm kind of 50/50 on the sergeant. And I could, I could remove that as well, I believe, tonight. And if, if you would get to a yes, then ultimately I would love you unanimous, counsel.
I don't know that I could do that because I think the water increase and the power increases more. I feel like we're, we told them when we did the, we were originally going to do the 10% on the power and we said 5%, let's see how it goes. If it doesn't work, and at the time, remember, we were experiencing extremely high gas prices. Well, they've come back down. Those gas prices have come down. And so it's not, and so I felt like we told the public at that time that if we did an additional increase, it would be 5%. Well, it ended up being 10%. So I'm not in agreement with that. I have a real problem with that. And as far as the water goes, 10%, I'm, you know, we talk about doing things incrementally year to year. Well, let's do it incrementally and just do 10% and see where our revenues are at the end of this year. I think we're okay. So, yeah, you'd have to be a couple more things to get me to a yes. You'd have to, you'd have to get the power down to 5%, water down to 10% and just have the one position and the gym. And take care of our employees, the existing employees that we've talked about.
What about the sidewalk? Increase funding for sidewalks?
Yeah, that'd be okay because that's coming out of fund balance.
Well, and just to clarify, the numbers for the, the power and the water aren't, aren't just numbers that we came up with. We did invest in the program, the software that shows us exactly where we'll be if we don't increase those percentages. And so I do feel like we've, totally respect where you're coming from, Mike. I'm not trying to disrespect your opinion at all. I totally, I completely value it. And, and also want just to let people know that those numbers are based on data. They weren't just sort of, oh, let's do 10 and, you know, and hope for the best. It's actually based upon.
But you, you say that and I want you to, and I, and I don't disagree with you, but those data points are all based on projections and not actual costs a lot of times.
But we've been, we as a city have been subsidizing residents with much of the utilities already for the last number of years.
Let me, have we been going in the, in the red in our, in our utilities, in all of our utilities? How are we subsidizing those? Dip it into retained earnings, but there are retained earnings in there, which is cash amounts that are in those enterprise funds. And, and how high are those? Those, they've been at about 34 and a half, 35%.
Dean, will you speak to the mic for us? Thank you.
And I, I think we've decided that retained earnings don't need to be at 30.
I think last year's financial statements, we experienced operating losses in both power and water. And when you experience operating losses, it dips into your retained earnings to use retained earnings.
And haven't we decided that maybe those retainers were high?
You're saying retained earnings are high?
The sum of, some of the retained earnings that we had were...
I think they're at adequate levels.
What is that? What percent is that?
On the power fund, water fund?
Yeah.
Power fund, I think, was about seven million, eight million? I don't remember off, off my head. I mean, to our, to our point is, I mean, we, we invested in this, this modeling system with Waterworth. We, we did our projections and we looked at our capital needs over the next several years and determined that that was probably the appropriate amount of increase needed to meet those capital expenses. If, if the council chooses to do something otherwise, we'll certainly live with that.
Mayor, if I may too, I think Josh did a, a great presentation at the last meeting showing what happens to our, our infrastructure over time if we're not investing. And that is one of the major reasons why we wanted to look at that Waterworth modeling. It's one thing to cover your operating costs, but we really feel like, given the condition of the infrastructure, we're seeing real time the number of water leaks that are springing up and, and the condition of some of those pipes. And that's why we are recommending to, to try to invest more in our infrastructure, keeping up on maintenance.
But there are also the power, I mean, you know, Brian did an excellent job of, of, you know, he and Josh both of projects they have that are coming up over the next few years that will use this, these funds, you know, as you go into the balances. And you saw the balances drop down within the next couple of years. And I just go back to the subsidizing. I, I, I want to, I don't think it's right for the city to be paying part of the cost for residents' usage.
And I see what you're saying, but what I'm saying is maybe 10% this year, 5% next year, or, you know, and space it out a few years to catch up, not, not just all of a sudden grab it all at once.
That's what, that's what, that's what kills me on all of this is this year is, and, and it's our, part of it's our own fault. You know, I'll say part of it's their own fault by, by not looking at it maybe a couple of years ago. I mean, I, and I was a naysayer, I think, a couple of these years on some of this. And, and I think it's put us in a pickle by not keeping up with some, you know, whether it's, some of it's inflation, some of it's just the cost of your business. When you look at, I mean, I don't know, I just know what my, I just look at secondary water. I mean, how that has almost quadrupled in, in price just in the last couple of years. When I, when I moved to Utah, like I was paying nothing. And I, and it's, you know, Ms. Dargy, you know, said earlier, talk about the fixed income. I'd go on a fixed income come July. And, and so it hits a little harder when you start thinking about it. So I understand. I, then you go back to, I think, the best chart, one of the best charts we show as a city is where we're at in relationship with our property taxes with the other cities in the county. And we expect in Kaysville, higher level of service, a higher level of everything. And unfortunately, that costs a little bit more. I don't, I don't know any other way, I don't know any other way around it. Anyway, I, this is painful.
It is. It's not just this. I'm, I'm looking at all the different things that people are getting hit with.
Oh, I, I know.
It's just, it's such a big thing. And, you know, I had a conversation with a lady over here up a couple of blocks this week. And I says, what is this going to do to you to see an increase in your property taxes a couple hundred dollars this year? And she says, it's the biggest bill I get on a fixed income. And, you know, I, I tried to convince her that the gym would benefit the community, but she couldn't see that. But she's right. And she says, we, we, we're not going to see these increases. We're not going to, so we're going to have to dip into. And what she explained to me was not a lot that they're going to have to dip into. So it's tough. And that's why I, it's tough on everybody. And, and when you look at that, that average income of 690,000 is the average value of a house, it's going to cost people a lot more than what we're saying. It'll cost some less, but that means if that's the average, that 4,500 people are going to pay more than what we're talking about and 4,500 people are going to pay less. It's just, and, and we all know that in reality, you hear every day somebody saying, if I had to buy the house I live in now, I couldn't afford it.
True.
I could not qualify to live in my home. I just want to loosen the burden a little bit. That's all I've been trying to do.
Mike, I totally appreciate where you're coming from because you're right. It is expensive. And as we see costs going up in other organizations, I think that tells us something. Things are just expensive. And if we continue to subsidize, we are going to continue to be behind. And then we'll get to the point that we might have a moderately healthy fund balance, a savings account. That's great. But if we're not covering our operational costs, that doesn't last very long, especially with the cost of things and they're rapidly increasing. We keep seeing it. Even though COVID's over, things are still expensive. I don't know why prices didn't adjust, but it's a new reality. And I think it, part of our responsibility, our, our biggest responsibility, like you say all the time, is the budget. And so we've taken this very seriously. And I'm so grateful for our council. I mean, thoughtful, thoughtful conversations, our staff. We've had multiple meetings, probably, I don't know, eight, 10 meetings over this, over the last little bit, talking about the budget because it's such a big deal and we take it so seriously. So I appreciate everyone's input, really good conversations. Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, Mayor, I just had an idea. Wonder if you would help me entertain this. The consideration of the amendment of the FY 2026 tentative budget is the action item that we're working on right now. Is there a, I know there was a deadline for us to approve the tentative budget, but this consideration to the amendment, is there a deadline on, on it? Be my first question?
Well, the, the final budget would be adopted at the next meeting on the 19th. So any amendments should happen before we obviously get to that.
Does it have to, does the final budget have to be adopted on that next meeting?
I mean, by the end of June, right?
It starts on July. I guess we could do a year-long CR.
We need to know what the modified tentative budget looks like so we can prepare the truth of taxation notices. We need to know the additional revenue the city's requesting so we can give that information to the county so they can send out tax notices identifying the amount of, of tax increase.
And what's the time period at which they need to have that information given to them?
When do they need it, Mike?
Yeah.
Well, we scheduled truth of taxation by August. They would need it probably no later than the first of July.
So here's, I, I guess my thought is, and this is like, it seems to me that the, that the two topics that are sort of up for debate right now are the additional percentage on the water and power and the additional employee of a police sergeant. I, if, if we had time, what I would prefer to have is at our next meeting, both of those people present to the public, power and water, and then the police, why that needs to happen. I know we've already had it.
We, we've discussed it. We, I mean, we spent hours on that. I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I, I guess I, for me, the biggest sticking point right now with the, with the, with the additional police officer is that our city manager and our two chiefs have both come to us saying we need this person. We need to have someone in charge at every single shift. And anymore you watch YouTube, the first thing a knucklehead says when they get pulled over is, I want to talk to your superior. I want to do this.
Yeah, but I hope you're not raising our budget based on a YouTube.
I'm not raising, come on, Mike, come on. I'm just saying, I'm saying that we are living in that society right now where these guys are going out risking their lives. And the other thing that they're doing is that every situation that they step into, they're being scrutinized. I mean, imagine how difficult that would be to do your job. And every single second you're doing your job, someone's standing over you just watching you and watching for you to make a mistake. And you don't have someone there with the experience and the years of experience to come in in those difficult situations and stand between you as a two-year-old or a three-year-old officer, stand between you and that micromanaging person and say, guess what? He's, he's doing his job correctly. Or, hey, officer, you need to step aside for a second. Let me show you how this is done. And again, I, I, I think you're right. Like, yeah, so we don't approve it. Maybe nothing happens. Again, my biggest point, I, I toiled over this, Mike, is that they are asking and saying we need it. And so how are we to then say, no, you don't? No, you don't. We know better. No, you don't. And so I guess, Perry, in answer to your question, I guess I wondered if having one more situation where all the, all the officers walked in, all the sergeants walked in and said, this is, these are the situations where we could have or we needed to have somebody more experienced and because we didn't, this happened? Maybe we don't need that. I don't know. I, it, it just is so difficult for me to hear them say we need it. If they said to me like, ah, we could go without it, boom, decision, done. I don't know.
There's lots and lots of years that that, none of that was available. Lots of that.
Councilmember Hunt had a comment.
Oh, thanks. I have a few things to say aside from this, but I'll bring those up after since we're talking about the police officer position. Obviously, I've been for this position for a while. I think Chief's been asking for it for probably more than three years, which is a good long time if he feels like it's been a need. But, you know, we put that off to try to defray some costs. And, and I appreciate what that's been able to do as far as not raising costs for our residents. I'll just kind of share some experiences I had. I, you know, I was for this, but I like to get a view of things on the ground. So I called up Chief and I said, can I follow one of our sergeants? You know, I've, I've ridden along with a regular officer and wanted to see what our sergeants have to say. So I went around from 5:45 until 1:00 in the morning. It was very fun. And, and got to see what they do in action and ask the people underneath them, you know, is this valuable? How is it valuable? And, and it's, I mean, there, there, there were a lot of reasons that I, as just a regular person, didn't understand they could be beneficial. And, you know, obviously, I believe we need more supervision to help with liability on issues. But they also explained that in a lot of situations, when multiple things happen, a regular, you know, police officer is focused on solving the problem. And so they're there trying to solve this problem. They get a call for another problem and they're not able, because they just haven't been in long enough or whatever, and no bad on them, they're new usually, to step back and take a command position and say, okay, this is where we're allocating resources. You go here, we're going to call another agency and for this one, we're going to have you go here. So it allows like an additional command perspective on situations where things like that happen. Additionally, while I was there, the sergeant was able to mentor a police officer. They were able to say, okay, you know, in this situation, what you did was fine, you know, but next time do this. I happened to be on when we had a very experienced officer in addition to the sergeant. And that officer made some tough calls on a, on a call and they said, this is, you know, this is right. And that officer made some tough calls on a, on a call. And they said, this is, you know, this is right, this is what you want to do. But having even that officer at that time felt like they needed to call a sergeant. And they said, look, I don't call sergeants very often, but it's, this is the second time I've done it. So there are situations where even someone who's been on the force for maybe fifteen years feels the need to have someone that they can call. And having them there relieves the stress. And I think anytime you relieve stress, people make better decisions. So it's not just like, oh, the sergeant's going to be there to supervise. There's so much more than just supervision. And another issue with just, you know, trying to make it so we have experienced guys on, we could. But part of the problem is, a lot of our officers are young. We don't have a ton of experienced officers. And a lot of the experienced officers we have are going to apply to be a sergeant here. And I assume that if they can't be a sergeant here, they'll apply to be a sergeant somewhere else. They'll want to be able to move up. And so this position allows for all of those kinds of scenarios. It's not just, oh, we need a supervisor on duty to prevent liability issues. It's, it's a whole list of things. I could go on forever. It was very eye-opening. I learned a lot about a lot of gross things. And it was intense sometimes. And, and I just, I'll just say that, you know, I'm five thousand percent behind the sergeant thing. And if we're looking for a way to come together where everyone can vote on this budget, I'm a hell no on a budget without the sergeant if, sorry, sorry all about the language. Hopefully not.
I'm kidding, I got some emails.
I, I feel that strongly about this. I don't, I don't really like to speak that way in public. But I feel that strongly about this position that we need it for our officers, for, and not just for our officers. You know, I've talked a lot about the benefit to our officers. But I would even say that the people we've talked to who've said, you know, raising our taxes like this are gonna, is gonna be very difficult. If someone came and broke into their house, they would want the police right there, right then. They would want them in ten minutes or less. They would not want them in half an hour or an hour, or like in other cities I hear about where they can't come at all. This is, it's not just for our officers. I'm not just saying this to help our officers. I'm saying this to help our residents to keep our service level high and where it should be. I mean, we're the second safest city, and I don't think we came on that by accident. But it's because of the policing we do, and it's why we need this. If Chief feels like we need it, and he's kept our city at that level, it's probably a good idea.
Thank you for that, Councilmember. That was, you gave a really, you know, great argument. And absolutely, we support our police. Going through this, this is a very challenging decision. Because when I look at the timeline of how we got to this point, when we first started, both the police chief, fire chief, and all the directors said, if there's one position to fill, it's the assistant attorney. And so we all, we all agreed. And, and so that's, that's where we were. But then it kind of morphed into, okay, let's do a sergeant. You know, and the police chief, when he gave us the data and the argument, it absolutely makes sense. And it's kind of a no-brainer to add a sergeant. And then the, and the fire chief, same thing. But I kind of keep going back to the fact that everyone in the city agreed on the position that's needed most is assistant attorney. We've had a hiring freeze the last couple of years. And we've done that, we did that on purpose because of inflation and all the extra costs and extra taxes. And to me, filling these positions immediately, it just kind of, there was no point for the hiring freeze then, essentially. And so I, I tend to agree more with Councilmember Blackham that let's kind of take this a little bit slower. I, I feel a lot of concern for our residents, especially those on fixed income, incomes, but everyone because of all the taxes that are going up and everything. And when we hear that we're the second safest city in Utah, it's kind of hard to swallow, you know, adding that other position and putting the extra burden on the tax rate right at this time. Although I do feel a lot of concern for our officers and the safety and those rare circumstances that something bad can happen.
Number five or twenty?
Number five or twenty?
In the safest city?
Oh, no, not at all. No, not at all. But I'm just imagining what my next-door neighbor's going to ask. We're the second safest city in Utah, explain this to me. And, and so this is a real challenge for me too, to, to figure out how to move forward. But if we could agree to just do that one position and maybe adjust the power and water and have a unanimous vote, but then it sounds like we won't with you. So I don't know, I would love to hear any other thoughts.
After the discussion we had on utilities, I just don't see how we, and we, sure, we can adjust them. But then you're using the, the general funds, you know, not, the funds for, we're subsidizing residents for their usage. And again, it puts us in a real bind within, I think it's by like twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Those, those numbers sign, I mean, I'm a numbers guy. And it's like, oh crap. And why hadn't we done this? We didn't, the rates, it's caught up so much, we didn't, we didn't anticipate. I just don't see how, how we can't on that. And so, and I, I think there's been, you know, I think it'd be awesome to be able to be unanimous on all of our decisions, but that's not really going to happen. And it's really why you have five on the councils. It's an odd number. So you really understand what the majority may be or may not be.
Can I say one more thing? Are you still talking, Perry?
No, no.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to bring up, and this is separate from kind of the conversation we've been having. Last meeting, we talked about taking some from the fund balance to work on sidewalks. And we proposed a hundred thousand. In working with Jason and staff, I think we've kind of decided that we want to have more in-depth conversations on more kind of in-depth repairs on our sidewalks and things. But also that our staff currently wouldn't even be able to do a hundred thousand dollars worth of work. So as part of this conversation, I want to change that to what staff recommended, which would be thirty thousand dollars out of the fund balance to do the sidewalks. And then kind of to segue into what I've also been thinking about is, a lot of what I hear from the residents is, we need to go back to the basics. And when we went to the league meeting in St. George, I went to a booth because they had cool hats. And Mayor Petro from Leighton was there. And, and, and they said, well, what's the biggest problem in your city? And I was like, Mayor Petro, what do you think the biggest problem in our city is? And she's like, well, everyone says it's your roads. It's definitely your roads. And I was like, oh, that stings a little, but okay. I, I can see that. And so I think part of this in, kind of along the lines of what Perry's saying, or sorry, Councilmember Oaks. I mean, we all saw the graphs. We all saw our cash position go through the floor if we didn't. I mean, I hate doing this. And I love, I love Mike for always keeping us on our toes and making sure we're considering all of the options. And I love his opinion and perspective. But if we believe those graphs, I can't see how we could responsibly say, we're going to lower these rates and just magically expect our cash position to not fall through the street. I think, you know, residents want us to get back to basics. We're making a good faith effort to do that with this sidewalk repair money. But we did all got an email this week from a resident talking about the catastrophic issues they're having with, with water in their neighborhood. They've had, I don't even remember, five or six, seven in the last few years. And it's very disruptive to their water and their, their services and their street. And I think those are the things we need to be covering, and those are the things we are trying to cover with these rate raises. I mean, I hate doing it. I've had to talk to so many of our neighbors and residents saying, this is going to be hard. We don't like it. And I feel the same way, you know, we're a single-income family, other than, you know, what I get here. And.
So you're single income.
Yeah. And so I, I feel like it's hard. But I, I just don't see any other way to do it. Like, if I thought there was another way, I would push more for that way. But I, I don't know what else to do. You know, I feel like we're backed into the corner.
All right. I'm sorry, did you say what you?
Yeah, sorry, Perry.
Sergeant or?
I'm okay with it. I, I mean, I, I, I trust both of our chiefs. And when, you know, when Fire Chief talked, and when he, when he was talking about what he isn't able to cover by not having Deputy Fire Chief, he's like, oh my, my heck, you know, why in the world aren't we there? But we're going to be there. You know, we're, we're going to end up with that second station at some time in the near future. And then it's real expensive, you know, when you look at the additions to, unless we go to a district or we do something else with fire, and that's a topic for another day. But please, I'm okay with the sergeant. And I, I was originally not okay with the gym over the, over the others. But seeing it and understanding it and talking to others, I'm on board with that now where I wasn't originally. I would like it to be a twenty-year loan instead of twenty-five, just because of the interest you're paying for those, I don't know. If you get it to fifteen, I'd rather do that.
We'll figure that out.
That's, again, another topic.
And I, and I will express some, there was, the way that Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Blackham have explained the way it went down with the request is true. And so that does, that is frustrating. I don't think it changes my mind, but it was, for whatever reason, it, I left that first meeting thinking that everybody had decided that they were just going to hire just the one person. And it doesn't change the fact that they now said, we need this other person. And I, and I think that changing your mind or adding something is okay. So I acknowledge that that was what happened, but I also doesn't change my mind about the recommendation and the need.
Okay, everyone, we ready to move on this?
I, I, yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I think this one's going to make the motion.
Okay, Councilmember Hunt.
I'm sorry, I thought you hit your line.
Appreciate the conversation. Sorry. Okay, you ready?
Yeah, so we're making a motion to approve it, because it's already an action item, right?
Whatever you'd like to make a motion to do.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the considerations of amendments to the fiscal year 2026 tentative budget, shifting that one hundred thousand from the fund balance to thirty thousand to reflect what we're capable of doing. And to keep the position and Jim and both positions, the, the assistant attorney and the police sergeant, as well as the Jim and the fund balance, thirty thousand dollars in that thing.
And, and remove the deputy.
Uh, yes, and remove the deputy fire chief. Thank you.
And keep the power and water as projected or as tentatively approved? Okay, is that, that's your motion?
Yes.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, council, thank you for the discussion. Motion carries.
Can I make, can I make a motion that, I guess we already, well, we said we'd go past ten, but I was going to say that motion that we move work items A and B to the next meeting?
Or, is that why you're here, Dexter?
Nevermind, sorry Dexter. I thought you were here for the Holland group. I'm sorry.
I second the motion.
All right. I retract, I retract my motion.
Oh, dang it.
Sorry.
My body's just on East Coast time right now.
Yes, you've been up since four AM, right? Okay, so.
I have lots of questions.
You're rescinding your motion?
I'm rescinding.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are on work item seven A, proposed text amendment to title fourteen dash six, motor vehicles. Who's going to, who's going to present this?
I will.
Okay.
So we have, I'm just going to say, a weird provision in our title fourteen that calls for a conditional use allowance that doesn't exist in our zoning code. And Councilmember Oaks sent me a text this morning, asking a question. So I did want to clarify that this change that we're proposing would not change what's allowed, with the exception of just, we would remove the provision for those conditional use that really doesn't exist in our zoning code. So what's on the screen before you right now is the code enforcement that we use when we do. We do get, I don't know, maybe five or six of these a year. And to my knowledge, there are no conditional use permits that exist with this particular enforcement issue. So what we are proposing is that we just eliminate that section fourteen dash six dash four that calls for that conditional use that again, doesn't exist in the zoning code. So this wouldn't functionally change what is allowed or how we do enforcement. It just would eliminate this odd conflict between the land use code not allowing these as a conditional use and our, our title fourteen.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions? Councilmember Jackson.
So someone can essentially still have some, up to three vehicles that don't run on their property?
Yes, you could have three, as long as they're screened as it, as it references. And you can have as many as you want, as long as they're licensed. In fact, I, I did go on a code enforcement case a few weeks back. And the individual was like, oops, a few of these expired, I'll get them registered. Multiple vehicles that they work on at a time, as long as they're registered, that's not an issue. So, and I just, through this whole thing, I, I struggled to think where we would want to have that.
Well, I can tell you where it came from, because three of the people sitting up here came up with that. It was Tammy, myself, or Mayor, myself, and John, because we were on the council when this came. And it was the hobbyist thing. It was the guys who wanted to have, because there are a lot of car enthusiasts out there that, and it takes three cars to make one, usually. And so we said, let's keep it as a conditional use, as you should recall, as long as the conditions that the planning commission gives to them, at least let's have that ability to say, yeah, you can do it, but you're going to have to do this, this, and this, and it can only be for so long, or whatever the condition. That's what it was there for.
And if that is, and if that is the will of the council, then I can work with my staff to come up with conditional uses and put those in a zoning code. But I think the way this is phrased and, you know, and this, again, this individual that was a hobbyist that had a bunch of vehicles, is just keep them registered. But of course, this is the prerogative of the council. And if that's not something you want to do, then I think we should work to remove, at least remove the conflict of not having that provision of a conditional use in any of our zoning code and put that in. I will also say, most, most of the time we get these complaints, they're.
I don't, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, so either we remove the conflict that allows for a conditional use permit to be granted when we do not have any conditional uses in our zoning code for this. Like, we have conditional use for a church in a residential zone.
Okay.
There's nothing in our zoning code that allows to have a conditional use for more than three junk or unlicensed vehicles. So either fix it by adding that use into our zoning code or removing the conflict where this exists, or where it says that the planning commission would authorize a conditional use that does not exist in our zoning code. And I spoke with Mr. Mills about this a couple of months back when this first came up. It's just an awkward provision because our land use code does not allow any conditional uses the way this is listing things.
I really think, sorry, sorry. But I just really think we really did visit this heartland. And we really did think that we did want to allow people to do this, if that's what they wanted to do. I don't have a problem putting it in the residential code as a conditional use with provisions.
Yeah, absolutely. We had some complaints. I'm just curious, why did this come up? Did you have a call? Did you have complaints? Or were you just looking through?
Yeah, I mean, when we, when we go on code enforcement complaints, which again, we get five or six of these a year, I just struggle to think why we would allow more than four. I mean, if, if you're an auto body shop, I could see that. If you're a commercial business, it's maybe restoring vehicles, I could see that. But, but really, it's come up because we have this provision, but we don't have it in our zoning code. So it, it puts the planning commission in a. So it, it puts the planning commission in a position to potentially authorize a conditional use permit for a conditional use that doesn't exist in our zoning code.
So, yeah, I would, I think, I guess, I feel like we, we hashed it out pretty, I don't know, what would you say? Like, we made it pretty strict, like you had to be behind a fence and like...
Yeah, have it covered.
Have it covered and like all these different things. Like I feel, I would feel comfortable putting what we've written here into the zoning code. Because I feel like at the time, we were like, it was one of those where we talked about this for like an hour and a half. And I felt like we made it so that, I mean, our biggest concern was like, oh, now we're just giving everybody permission to have seven, bunch of junk cars, right? And so I kind of feel like we went through it and sort of made it so that it was like, you really have to want to do it and you have to like, put it behind the fence and do all these different things.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I, I personally feel better throwing it into the zoning code if that saves, if that solves a problem. And I can't see an instant where we will regret making that decision. Maybe we will, but...
I would second that.
Okay, yes, does that...
Yep.
Does that work? Okay.
Does that work? So make a motion that we move work item A to an action item, changing it to where we add the 14-6-3 language into our zoning code.
Second.
Okay, councilmember Jackson.
Point of order on that. So perhaps consider a motion amendment to direct staff to do that, because we would have to take this through planning commission first, because it would be in the land use code.
Okay.
Okay. So granted.
Clear as night.
So moved, or so, so friendly amendment. I accept your friendliness and your amendedness.
You understand it?
Second.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, if we're putting something in the land use code, we have to go through planning commission, public hearing. So we'll put that on our to-do list and at some point in the future, bring an ordinance amendment back for title 17 that then could allow title 14 to be in congru, in congruence with our land use code.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
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 Aye? Oh, sorry.
Afraid I hadn't heard you again.
Okay, motion, motion carries. All right. 7B Dexter, this is your moment.
I make a motion that we close the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you for rescinding your motion earlier, because...
Sorry.
Nope, it's totally fine. So Mayor, council, thank you for having me here tonight. What you have in your packet tonight is a whole list of revisions to codes and standards that we've been working on for the last couple of years, even before I was here. We're just been compiling lists, like any time a development or contractor comes in and there's an issue, we're like, oh crap, we need to, that's probably not, oh my.
Oh shucks.
Yeah, oh shucks. We need to fix our code to address issues like that. So basically what we've put before you and proposed are, the highlights of this are, we are adopting a drainage manual to address situations like Orchard Ridge. That way we can have design standards that can do natural channels and hopefully we will avoid that in the future. We also added definitions for clarifications for plan approvals. Also the state passed a law, they got rid of lot combinations and lot line adjustments and have renamed those as boundary adjustments. So we just adopted code or put, we suggested code that is in line with their legislation that they passed. And then temporary turnarounds, we have major issues with those, those are very expensive, almost forty thousand dollars a pop to do. So if we, we came up with this idea to use driveways so that we don't have to rip up new asphalt, new curb and gutter and sidewalk just to get rid of a turnaround, and that will save us a lot of money. I mean, since I've been here, we've done two, both at thirty, thirty-five thousand. So that's sixty-five thousand dollars that we could have saved with our new code. So it will help.
Great.
And then also, we're gonna adopt a crosswalk policy. We get many requests of, hey, kids are crossing here, can you please look at this? And this policy lays out exactly what to look at, what parameters to set, so we can be clear going forward. And lastly is traffic impact studies. We don't have anything now that says you need to do it for these scenarios. We will now have that and what needs to be in the report. That way we can plan going forward and how to address issues at intersections. So with that, if you've had a chance to look at the code, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
One question, so the traffic study thing. So if somebody's doing a, let's say, somebody puts a, an accessory dwell or something develops a piece of ground right here, they want to put some townhouses, maybe adds three or four homes or whatever, I'm not, I don't, not saying put townhouses, I just said that as a thing, okay?
Right.
Let's say a piece of property they're adding three or four homes to, would that require them to have to do a traffic study?
Yeah, so we have parameters in there that say like, if it creates so much traffic, so many daily trips, then it triggers that to have a traffic study.
So each dwelling's like 10 daily trips, so what is that parameter?
I'd have to look exactly, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I just think that, I don't want to make it so burdensome.
Or costly.
Or costly, that if somebody up here splits a lot off or puts four dwellings in somewhere on a...
No, that would not require...
Then all of a sudden they gotta do a traffic study.
It would be more of major, like if it's on like a collector road or a...
Like Phil Holland's development would require a traffic study.
Exactly, Phil Holland's, Symphonies, those would all trigger it. Commercial, a lot of times would trigger it. But if someone's just splitting their lot and doing like two duplexes, no, that would not trigger a traffic study.
All right. Have you ever wondered who your true friends are? I want you to, I want you to turn around and look.
Paul's got my back, we work a lot together.
You can clear a room, buddy.
Cleared the room.
So...
Nothing for me.
So as I, as I read through, and I didn't understand much of it at all, so, but I saw that Josh had a lot of questions on things and my, so my only question was, I love, I love using the comments or, you know, as you're, you're able to see people, their reviews, but were his questions satisfactorily answered? So he was happy with the answers?
Yeah, so in the future, I'm not gonna include those comment sections because he made those comments and then I made the track changes. So, yeah, those comments have been addressed.
I figured, okay, I figured that would be, or it wouldn't have come this way, but I just, because he had, he had quite a few. And, and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate that, so...
Yeah, and Nick's been a great help too. So he, he sat down with us for hours on end and we hashed a lot of this out, so...
And I think for the crosswalks, I love, I love the diagrams, you know, the go, no go. That really made it almost, did he approve?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I understood.
It makes my life easier. When I go out there and look at these things, I'm like, okay, I have my graph, I know what to do.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. So does someone...
So John, you wanna make a motion since you're his friend?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, oh, yeah, I will, yes.
I'll make a motion that we not approve, not, that we approve, or that we move act, work item B to an action item.
I'll second.
Okay, councilmember Oaks.
Aye.
Aye!
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you Dexter for sticking with us till 10:10. Everyone, oh, wait, we're not done, sorry. Okay, we're not done yet.
We could be.
Councilmember reports. I've got nothing. Anyone else?
I know, it's late, but I'm so excited that the CTC partnered with Parents Empowered and has an awesome thing at Lagoon.
That's true.
So that's so huge. So go, take your kids to Lagoon and check out some tips and things for helping your kids not drink underage.
Well, and also look at the Parks and Rec posts, the social media posts, we have a great, great lineup of exciting things happening in Kaseville. Food trucks, fairs, First Fridays, all kinds of great things.
Four-wheelers, tearing up the lawn.
Good, good times. And if you are driving an ATV on the grass at Burns Park or any park in the city, you're in big trouble.
Big trouble.
Don't, don't destroy the grass. Okay, anyone else?
Councilmember Oaks did a fabulous job at the Memorial Day.
Yes.
And, and so did Councilwoman Hunt as well, yeah. Thank you for your service, both of you.
Is it videoed or on YouTube? Is it...
I should have filmed it.
I hope not.
I could rehearse it to you. In fact, actually, would you give it to Mike in, tonight?
Tonight?
Can you stand up there, please?
Okay, Jason, do you have anything?
Next Thursday, the planning commission wants to have a joint council, yes.
Josh, can we invent the thing to increase our pay?
No.
I won't be here.
And, and councilmember Oaks will be here either, but...
I'm not either, okay. I know we don't need everybody, but...
Okay.
No, in fact, I mean, they're just, excuse me, we'll present the initial findings based on the survey and the community feedback. It'll be live streamed, so you can watch later. We will get that, we probably won't have the initial report in the packet until maybe Tuesday, so we'll send that out. And if you have any questions for anyone who can't make it, please feel free to reach out.
You said in your email that possibly it might start at like 7:10 or 7:20 maybe, that, that, I could probably make that.
Yeah, so we will have one conditional use permit on the agenda. So we'll, we'll complete that business and then go into the presentation.
Okay. I will be in Paris, so no.
Oh, oui oui. Councilmember Oaks.
Councilmember Oaks, if you will go to the dedicated gluten-free bakery called Copains and bring me back some sourdough bread, I will be forever grateful.
Nice. That's, I had no idea they have gluten-free there in Paris.
In, in closing, I will just mention that the best of Kaseville will be announced tomorrow and Kaseville may have won in quite a few areas. So I just, thank you to the city, thank you to everybody who voted, we posted this on social media and so many people voted. We might have won best parade, we might have won best city, we might have won best Fourth of July, we might have, might have won best police and fire department, fishing spot, movie theater, library, and lots of other categories. So thank you, everybody. Yeah, fishing pot, spot, Ponds Park, yeah. Okay, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
An hour ago.
Thank you, everyone. Aye, all the paper, aye.
I think we've done since Perry did that lately.
That's probably true.
Yeah, we won a lot. Perry, have fun. Good job, thank you, thank you.